The time is 7:30. I call the July 15th meeting of Yardley Borough Council to order. Please stand for the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please, Commissioner Johnson.
Ms. Thompson.
Present.
Mr. Applebaum.
Here.
Mr. Carlson.
Present.
Mr. Stumpf.
Present.
Ms. Scherer.
Present.
Ms. Siegel-Morris.
Present.
Mr. Finer.
Present on Zoom.
With seven members present, six in person, we have a quorum of council. I will start with an announcement to the public that there was an executive session of council that occurred on July 2nd at 7:30. The topic of this executive session was personnel and no vote occurred. All council members received 24 hours notice and the topic received 24 hours notice and also the topic of the session as required by law. We're going to move up our first order of business from the solicitor's report to go over items B as well as C. Mr. Griffin, please.
Yeah, so before you this evening is two related agreements. One is a memorandum of understanding that involves the appointment of Sergeant Golden to the position of interim chief of police. The terms of that employment include a pay increase, a bonus, and also some additional terms with regard to overtime in his pension plan. The second agreement is a side letter agreement pertaining to the police department in general that provides eligible officers with a pay increase and also appoints Corporal Adam Clark as the union representative in lieu of Sergeant Golden in light of his new appointment. So if the council is so inclined, they can make a motion to approve those agreements.
So I would be looking for a motion this evening to approve item B, consideration of the memorandum of understanding with Sergeant Golden to appoint him as interim police chief effective April 1st, 2024, with the title retroactive.
I'd like to make that motion so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion.
Motion was made by councilperson Applebaum, seconded by councilperson Scherer. Before we vote, I'd just like to say this is a happy occasion. We don't always get happy occasions here in council chambers. So I just, I think most of you in the room know Sergeant Golden. It's great to see you all showing up for him as he has showed up for Yardley Borough for 20 years. Many of you know he joined the force in August of 2005. He's a U.S. Army veteran, which we are all very proud of and has led him, I think, in the way that he is a police officer here. He's risen through the ranks here in Yardley Borough, held various leadership positions, and also he has bettered himself through leadership training, most recently as a graduate of the prestigious Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command just this year in April. We have also recognized him internally with over a dozen Yardley Borough Police Department recognitions and awards. What I appreciate most about Sergeant Golden is that he is a leader in our force, but he's also an approachable person. I can talk to him, you can talk to him, members of the public can talk to him, and that's something that I think we can all really appreciate in a member of our police force and our, not to call the vote before it happens, but our next police chief. So any other comments from council?
I would like to, can you hear me okay?
Public comment.
Yes, sure.
You, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. I see myself with two heads on my screen, which is a little strange. I just want to thank you for what your words that you just said. I want to thank council for coming together to create this and to recognize and make this official for Sergeant Golden. And I want to thank Sergeant Golden for 20 years, over 20 years of his service to our community and the new energy that he's bringing. You can see it, you can feel it. There's new energy in the Yardley Police Department, and it's a pleasure to experience that, so thank you.
Any other comments from up at the table?
Sure.
Will Sergeant Golden, I'm just so thrilled that this time has finally come. I don't think it's any secret that I'm, I've been, you know, supporting this and I just can't wait until you get sorted this afternoon. So great, best wishes and congratulations.
Congratulations. This is really wonderful.
I would just say that I think the best time to have done this would have been April 1st, but the second best time is July 15th. So congratulations, sir.
Any other comments from up at the table first? All right, any public comment this evening? I apologize, we prepared for the pictures and everything, so the public comment microphone is over here. But if anyone would like to come forward and give public comment on this item of business.
I wonder if I could.
Yes, please come forward and state your name and address.
Just stand up here.
Yeah, if you could just, I know we're packed here tonight, but into the microphone so folks at home can hear you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robert Peralis. I'm the director of the American Legion Riders here in Yardley, have been so for the past five years. And I just wanted to say that Will's example to our group and, you know, to the community, to the community, as you said, is exemplary. His leadership capabilities, as you said, and his friendship is far beyond anything I've ever experienced, you know, with a law enforcement, you know, personnel, which is nice. You know, it's a change, you know, it's a friendship, and we're very proud of him.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment this evening? Ma'am.
Teresa O'Neil, 148 Pennsylvania Avenue in Yardley. And I want to thank council for recognizing Sergeant Golden. My husband hired him in 2005 and hope for this day to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, Ms. Corsi.
Shirley Corsi, South Canal Street in Yardley. Just a quick word, I also want to thank Sergeant Golden. I first met him, and I wanted to say thank you, this is a good opportunity to say it, on June 19th, when Gather Place sponsored Juneteenth. He, I didn't know it was him, I just saw this tall guy show up. He wasn't in uniform, he said he was off that night. His police on duty was there. He introduced himself to me and he just took an extra step to make sure I was comfortable, so I think this is great for Yardley. Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Please.
I'd like to say thank you Sergeant Golden and always saying hello to me and wally every morning. I'm grateful. Thank you. And then, are we on the same topic?
No, it's different. Yes, same topic, yep. Any other public comment this evening on this matter? All right, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Chief.
Where's our photographer? Some pictures.
So good evening, everyone. For those of you who I don't know or don't know me, my name is Chris Harding. I'm currently the mayor here in Yardley Borough. And traditionally, when I'm up here swearing in officers, it's officers newly joining the force. And we give kind of the same words. I, you know, always let them know and their families know that we take the job, we're about to enroll in very seriously and the risks that come along with the job and how that means, how much that means to us as a community. I don't think I need to give that speech this evening. This room is filled with officers who I probably said those words to or heard me say those words, with community members, with family, with friends. So I think we all know the risks that not only you, but everyone in law enforcement takes, and we all appreciate them, and that's why I think this evening is so important. So, ready for this?
Yes, sir.
All right, so please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, William J. Golden III.
Aye, William J. Golden III.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will uphold the laws and ordinances.
And I will uphold the laws and ordinances.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Chief of police.
Chief of police.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And to the best of my judgment and ability.
And to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody, for coming today. I can see a few worded, putting in the badge and everything. It's about four weeks of this day, as council president has stated. It was August 15th, will mark my 20-year anniversary here. That same day 20 years ago, I was hired by the late Chief James O'Neill, and I was sworn in as a part-time officer by the late Mayor Johnson. Standing in this exact same spot, I am tonight. This was one of the best feelings I had in my experience in my life back then. During my time here, I was able to grow, learn, and be mentored into the law enforcement officer I am today. If only, this was only possible due to the efforts of many, as no one gets in this position alone. With the efforts of past and present officers, who might have been privileged to me during my tenure, or without their hard work and dedication, this wouldn't be possible. It was the efforts of people like Borough Manager Paula Johnson, financial assistant Patty Sargent, and emergency management coordinator Mr. Wes Foraker. Who for the last four months now have been there to assist me and guide me in my new role. And I thank you.
She's hiding.
It was also the residents and business owners of the Spine Town. For the last 20 years, I've shown nothing but support and care, not only towards myself, but to this agency as a whole. And I thank you all for that so very much. It was family, friends, acquaintances, my amazing wife, who stood by me during this time in my tenure here to grow the borough. To this borough council, and the past members of the borough council, that I have come to never work with, thank you for your trust in me to lead this department going forward. And last but not certainly not least, Chief Kelly, who's here tonight. Chief Kelly, for the last 10 years, you have given not only the borough the best of you, but to me, and all the officers here in Yardley Borough as well, your mentorship, teachings, guidance, and the time given me, this has become a success. To have been afforded the chance to work under you was truly nothing but an unwearable privilege. To now work next to you and alongside you, is now I'm not. Thank you, Chief Kelly, very much.
But always makes user, one speech segues into another, so with that said, Chief Kelly of Lord Mayfield Township, formerly of Yardley Borough, please come on up and give a badge in your pocket.
I do.
Just so happened.
Will has two other people that he'd like to have participated in tonight's ceremony by pinning these golden eagles on his prowler. The first would be his wife, Brandy Gold. Were you worried about that?
We're just gonna be, uh...
We're just gonna be checking.
We're just gonna be, uh...
Just push through up there. The ceremony. The second person Will has asked to pin the other eagle is Sarah O'Neil. Obviously, Will's first chief police.
She's all choked up.
Yeah, let's take some pictures.
Get a wide angle lens, Jared?
Yeah.
Holy smokes.
All right, everybody look this way, smile, one, two.
Great job.
Anyone else want to come up? Blue Knights? Get the pot earlier tonight, bro.
My pleasure.
Congratulations. For my work, I'm gonna do committee meetings, I want to do on a Sunday or a Monday.
I have Sunday.
All right, that's all good.
It's like a long story.
Right month.
It's not, it's not my...
We have the, oh, we just need the base. You got it done?
Get this out of your way, Mayor.
Is that here, sir?
Yeah, that is.
I apologize. You should have asked before I just said it.
Good, we're good.
My apologies.
Mostly. Good enough. All right, folks, we have one other item that relates to Chief Golden's appointment, and that is a side letter agreement. So Yardley Borough Police Department has a union, they have collective bargaining powers, and Chief Golden was formerly the head of that union, but in his capacity as chief of police, he can no longer serve in that role. So this side letter appoints Corporal Adam Clark to that position. He has reviewed the agreement and agreed to serve in that capacity. It also grants the full-time police officers a one-time special bonus payment this year, given the impact of the interim period and the additional duties they've taken on during that period. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Scherer, seconded by councilperson Siegel-Morris. Any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, sorry? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we're going to go back to the top of the meeting with community announcements. Does any member of council first, and then the public, have announcements about upcoming events in the borough?
Yes, Madam President.
Please.
I just wanted to let business owners know that there is a summer mixer, and it's called Mix and Mingle, hosted by the Yardley Business Association this Thursday, July 17th, 6 to 8 p.m. at Wildflower Valley Yardley, and that's right up Buttonwood Drive.
Excellent, thank you. Any other community announcements from the table first? Any community announcements from the public? Yes, Ms. Corsi.
Okay, real quickly, Shirley Corsi, South Canal Street Yardley, and Gather Place on South Canal Street. Just a quick announcement, last Wednesday, the Pennsylvania Cable Network, they visited Gather Place, and they filmed and interviewed me. I was able to talk about the history of Yardley and everything that's been happening with the old AME church, and also the launch, I got a America 250 PA semi-Quinn grant, and I completed the first phase, and so I was able to announce that. It will be airing in mid-August, and I'll be sure to let everyone know. So I hope I represented Yardley well, and this will be in the archives of the Pennsylvania Cable Network. It's going to be part of their African-American experience session.
I know that you did represent us well. Thank you so much. Any other community announcements? Any other community announcements about happy documentaries, or features, or upcoming events? Alright, we'll move on to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of public can approach council, state their name and address, and they can address us about matters. Not on the agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes per matter. Any public comment this evening? Yes?
My issue is, there's a parking problem, and several of our clients, myself included, at 24 South Main Street.
Can you wait till you get back to your microphone to talk? Thank you.
Eli Dreyfus, 24 South Main Street, Dreyfus Opticians. We have currently two parking spots in front of our office, and with the kindness of Paula, several years ago, we were able to get one-hour parking signs and compact car-only parking sign. And it doesn't really seem to work. Recently, as of July 1st, the state came through, and they took away the compact car sign and installed a right-turn-only sign for trucks. However, that sign's not really noticeable because there's now a tree in the way. It should've been on the other side. But my issue is, when it comes time to restriping the streets, would it be possible to paint the curb yellow and only have one larger spot in the middle, so that our clients, when they come out of the driveway to make a right-hand turn, don't clip the parked cars that are oversized, like trucks and things like that, because you really need to go into the opposing traffic to make a hard right. And I was just hoping at some point, maybe when Ken gets around to restriping the street, we could possibly just do one large spot, as is the case in front of 40 South Main Street as well. There's just a single spot there. Just to make it easier for people to get in and out the driveway is probably one of the narrowest openings on the street. You know, I just wanna make it easier for our clients and Jeff Schrader, who's also a tenant in the building, his clients as well. Quite often, I have to leave my office and stop traffic in both directions so some of the elderly patients could make that hard right turn without being nervous about it. So just a request, if there's an issue to re-stripe the street, if we can do that, or if that would be possible, that would be great. And then the other issue down the road is switch the sign so somebody could see the no-right-turn sign for tractor-trailers. It's ten feet behind a tree. I mean, the state came in, and they were there like in 10 minutes, and they never looked. They just, done. And they took down my compact car parking sign, so I don't have that anymore.
Thank you.
That was my comment.
Any questions on this?
Just a quick comment on that, which is that, just thinking long had, so I'm just putting it out there so that it's been said, started here, is that things like this can also be resolved using like curbs that go out towards the street where you don't have cars parked. So you could have like both sides of that spot come out in such a way that there's really only room for one spot, and it creates the visibility, but there's no way that people can turn that into a spot, and it's better for pedestrians. So that's the kinda thing with law that could improve Main Street, the whole length of Main Street. Look for spots like that and do those.
Crosswalk would be nice.
Sir, please.
Madam President, my name is Jeff Schrader. I'm a resident of and a business owner in the borough. I'm also Eli Dreyfus's tenant at 24 South Main Street. I'm here to speak very briefly, but further to the matter he just brought to your attention. And I wanted to bring just a greater sense of urgency to this matter, because when we do have people who don't follow the parking rules as evidenced by the stripes for the spots in front of the building, we have a situation where we're effectively choked off. And when I say "we," clients coming in or exiting our premises. If you look at those pictures, when you have an extended-length vehicle that goes far beyond the striped line and really, really encroaches on the lip of the curb, you can't negotiate that turn unless someone from our office, or one of our offices, goes out and blocks traffic and helps that exiting car to leave our premises. There's another point I wanna make. We have a very, very spacious parking lot behind the building that's terribly underutilized because people are fearful of pulling, they'll pull in, but they're fearful of exiting the property. So what happens is that our clients who come to see us, and I'm talking about Mr. Dreyfus also, because we're both service businesses, we see people by appointment, so we know who's coming and who's going. They're on a schedule. It's not as if someone just casually pops in to either of our offices. We have a flow, but we have a controlled flow. If those people are not parking in our spaces behind our office, they're taking up spaces on the street, and they're hurting other businesses on South Main Street. That's a point that just simply shouldn't be overlooked. On top of that, I have a question. I do know that Main Street is state-governed as a road, but what latitude and what discretion is given to the local municipality through which it runs? Who gets to determine the spacing of the parking spots? Who gets to determine the placement of the parking spots, and the way that they're lined, and whether they're limited to compact cars or to normal-sized vehicles? So I ask that question of you and the council, if you're able to give an answer presently. But ultimately, we seek a remedy, and that remedy is the placement of a single spot which would allow for plenty of room on either side of the two driveways to allow clients to move in and out of our respective property. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one other point in closing. Chief, congratulations. It's nice to be here for such a joyous occasion. God bless you.
So I believe the striping and the parking spots are up to us, but everything needs to go through PennDOT for approval. Does anybody have a different understanding? But we will certainly look into this matter expeditiously, and I think probably it will be Public Works and Public Safety that handle it primarily, so.
Ori.
You've been warned. Public Works does, we have working sessions of council, the second meeting of every month, but not during the summer. But yeah, I believe that they can meet as needed.
Ori, do you have any insight on that at all, of more years than me of working with PennDOT? Can we just?
I believe anything on Main Street has to go through PennDOT, unfortunately, because otherwise we could just have Ken do it. But I think we need to look at that actually. I would say maybe the place to start is asking the borough manager to look into it, because it's just like an administrative function.
Sure.
If we can, if we can stripe, or we need to go through a process. If we have to get it approved through PennDOT, it's not gonna be easy. It's just, and not gonna be quick. It's just the way that that works. So let's hope we don't need to do it that way, but I'm afraid we probably do.
Just a follow-up question on that, so we can get a little more somewhat of an answer. Paula, do you know if this Ken repaint those lines on Main Street, or is he more of the?
Ken does those. And I'm also thinking in that area might be a good idea to put a yellow curb. So at least there's a visual. People don't read signs, unfortunately. We have too many signs in town the way it is. But if you put a yellow curb in there, I think that catches people's eyes. And enforceable? I don't know. We'll have to talk to the chief about that.
So if I'm not?
A yellow curb, a curb, as I understand, is kind of like a, it's an in-between area, a gray area, no pun intended, yellow-gray area, because it's not really, it doesn't mean anything. But people see it, and they think that that means no parking. So it does the psychological effect without actually being anything legally enforceable. But that might be helpful, and that's something we probably do not need to go through PennDOT to do.
So I actually have a little bit of insight on that, because before I was on council, the curb in front of my house was painted yellow, and so I actually did the research initially out of frustration, because, oh my gosh, how dare Ken come and paint my curb yellow, and I didn't even know about it. But then when I looked into the research, municipalities are granted the right by the Commonwealth. You don't have to, but you can paint your curbs yellow to denote no parking. I can say, just to speak to what you guys said, I'm a frequent customer of Yardley Pizzeria just north of you guys. It is, and this, the two spots in question are between the entrance to their lot and the entrance to your lot. So when I exit their lot, I guess. I try to look, I literally try to look through the windows of cars all the way across, and then I try to get my nose out and hope I don't get hit, and then I pray and make the turn. So I try to do that without my toddler in the car. Yeah.
Can I ask, not to get too deep on?
One second, one second. Mr. Finer, you can't see because you're not in the room, but Councilperson Segal Morris has a comment first.
Until we have permanent fix, can we have a posted, like, you know, one of those temporary police no-parking signs? Don't we block off, like, when we're doing street cleaning stuff? Can't we put a posted sign and not have people park in that spot for now?
And just take out both spots, maybe even?
Could, but I think it, if you put something like that up and leave it there, people are just gonna ignore it.
After a while.
Yeah. I'll get Ken on this soon.
Mr. Finer?
Yeah, I just, I believe we are the ones who currently paint the lines between spots. So I think we just need to get clarity on whether we control the parking painting, just consider it one of those lines, or whether that is PennDOT, because then maybe that falls under municipal parking.
There's a couple of different things. Obviously, repainting existing spots and lines is one thing. If we're changing from two spots to one, I think that's obviously something very different. So I heard four things, I think, tonight. Yellow curb, and restriping, which seems pretty straightforward, changing the spots from two to one, the turn sign needing to be moved away from the tree, and then also the compact vehicle sign being reintroduced. Does that capture everything that we want Manager Johnson to look into? Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? I think we're still on public comment. Dr. Perlmutter, welcome.
I'd like to congratulate Chief Golden. I know Chief O'Neill is watching right now, and he's so proud of you. He's so proud of this moment. I also would like to thank Officer William Bowday and the Yardley Makefield Fire Department for their incredible response to the fire last month. And now for my comment. Through several write-to-no requests, I reviewed dozens of emails, texts, and documents concerning the Police Transition Committee. I discovered a number of very disturbing issues concerning Council President Caroline Thompson. The RTKs revealed that President Thompson created the committee, appointed herself chair, handpicked members, and held closed-door, secret meetings with the specific intention of dismantling the Yardley Borough Police Department and merging with Lower Makefield Township. It was also evident that President Thompson never even considered it an option to appoint Chief Golden for the permanent position of chief of police. This was first evident in the invitations that President Thompson sent out to her handpicked members that she invited to be on the committee. She asked three questions in her email. What will our search for a new chief look like? Are there any creative solutions to addressing the budget shortfalls? What is the feasibility and public government support around a merger with LMT? Other PTC documents included a discussion framework, shared police services with Lower Makefield Township background and context. It also became evident that President Thompson was planning the future of Yardley Borough PD with Chief Kelly during his exit interview, and that she wanted to make certain that the conversation was not disclosed to the public. In an email, she wrote, "I'm so glad we took the time to do this exercise. A lot of valuable nuggets in here. I've confirmed the documents are not releasable under RTK as a personnel file document." This is not the first time that Caroline Thompson has schemed to avoid the RTK laws. She has looked for ways to hide information from the public before. A detailed review of numerous Police Transition Committee documents, and there were dozens, revealed that Caroline Thompson copied and pasted information from various sources without understanding the underlying methodology for reviewing a police department, which she refers to as mirroring, which is really plagiarism. It was obvious she does not know what she is doing. In an email, she wrote, "Let me be clear. While Chief Kelly was still employed with Yardley Borough, I had the opportunity to review service-level statistics from Chief O'Neill's tenure. The numbers speak for themselves. Further, the force did not participate in community policing." End quote. This statement demonstrates that Council President has no idea how to analyze police statistics, and really has no idea what community policing is. We had community policing under Chief O'Neill. There's a difference between proactive and reactive policing, patrolling versus calls for service. The RTKs included a proposed Yardley Borough Department Officer Interview Guide with questions designed to elicit answers that support a merger with LMT. In response to being criticized for creating bad morale in Yardley Borough Police Department, President Thompson decided to question police officers. She reported back, "The response was that morale is great and LMP, LMT pays well." First of all, how does anyone expect an officer to answer a question like that? Should they say, "Oh, I don't mind that I'm gonna lose my rank and seniority and be busted down to patrol officer after 20 years of hard work?" These inappropriate questions appear to be in violation of the police union contract. Thompson is trying to get our officers to participate in losing their own jobs. It's kind of obscene to ask those questions, and frankly, officers should not answer any questions without a union representative present. Finally, when other council members provided alternate suggestions for the future of the Yardley Borough Police Department, Thompson responded with dozens of condescending text messages and a 17-page, single-spaced email filled with personal attacks against all the council members who did not agree with her. The public needs to see all of these documents that demonstrate how, what's going on behind the scenes here. And finally, President Thompson has irrevocably compromised the Police Transition Committee and should immediately recuse herself from the committee. It would be a farce for her to be interviewing candidates to be on that committee, and has really made it clear that she'll only be selecting those that will further her agenda to dismantle the Yardley Borough Police Department.
Thank you, Dr. Perlmutter. You went far over your three minutes, but I appreciate that story that you owe for us. Any other public comments this evening? Alright, hearing none, we will move on to consideration of the consent agenda dated July 15th, 2025. It includes approval of the minutes dated June 17th, 2025, certificate of appropriateness 25-16, 10 North Main Street sign, event permit to paint the town purple October on the lamp posts, event permit for the third annual self-care event, a banner permit restaurant week from 8/18 to 24/2025, a banner permit for Canalween from 10/26 to November 1st, 2025, and consideration of FEMA-funded 112 to 114 Morgan Avenue property payment certificate number five. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I would like to remove item A, please.
Any other requests to remove an item?
Can we remove item C, just for the purpose of discussion?
Sure. Any other requests for removal? Do I hear a motion to approve item B and D through G? Is there a, motion was made by Councilperson Segal Morris, seconded by Councilperson Share. Discussion from council? Discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to approve the minutes dated June 17th, 2025?
No move.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Councilperson Share, seconded by Councilperson Carlson. Discussion from council? Mr. Finer?
Yeah, I just, I wasn't at the meeting.
Any discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
I'll understand.
Motion carries 601. And finally, we'll consider the event permit for Paint the Town Purple in October lamp posts. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Councilperson Share, seconded by Councilperson Segal Morris. Discussion from council, starting with Councilperson Stump.
Yeah, so I know when this came before us last year, there was talk about, I know this is a separate thing, but there was talk about like the light posts and ribbons and changing the color of the lights, and I think, if I recall correctly, because we ended up turning down ended up turning down the thing for the lights, and we said that we would bring it up for a discussion this time next year when it, when it came up. So I just wanted to see if anybody had any specific thoughts on this, or do we feel, I mean, what's, what's our protocol for things like this if we get multiple organizations that want to do something?
I thought they were just asking for the ribbons.
Yeah, so this is just the ribbons, but it's, I mean, it's, it's in kind of that category, like, it's not the lights, but it's, you know, we're tying ribbons to the light posts. Did we kind of determine a criteria, or are we going to, you know, potentially have three different groups represented? And I'm, and I'm not speaking to the merit or the not merit of this specific thing. I just know that this was something we had a lot of discussion about, and we didn't really come to a conclusion.
I thought what we had decided, and again, it was a year ago, like you said, that we would try to get everything on the events calendar, and the best way to do that in the beginning of the year, when Mr. Forker's putting that together, would probably be any event permit we've received for the last 24 months, maybe just, like, send an email, "Hey, we're putting together events calendar. Do you plan to have your event again?" I think he does some of that, but to date this year, we haven't had any conflicts again. I don't, I, I don't remember, I think the vast majority of that conversation was just that we had, I think, three within one month, two wanted to do light bulbs, and two wanted to do banners, but so far, so good this year.
So here's my question on that, and obviously, changing the light bulbs and doing a ribbon are two very different things, but, so if we approve this tonight with the purple ribbons on the lamp posts in October, is this, what if we get another one of these before us next month? Do we have a limit of one? Is it first come, first served? Would we just consider the merit of another one on its own?
I mean, if we're approving an event permit, I, I think a permit is first come, first served if it's a permit for space in the borough and the space has then been taken.
Okay.
I agree. May I make one comment?
Sure.
So I, I really appreciate the folks that are doing the, wrapping the ribbons around the posts and that we're not having another conversation about the actual light posts. I did think that, this is a positive comment, that if they, or maybe we could consider changing the lights on Buttonwood Drive to purple, possibly during that month, and if there's a disagreement that, I'm not hurt by it, I just throw it out there.
The, the party lights?
The LED lights along Buttonwood Drive.
Yeah, I think, I do remember, this is kind of starting to jiggle things in my mind, that we didn't want to change the actual light bulbs because of safety concerns, but yeah, the string of lights along the mural are the ones that are up for grabs.
We used to do that at Experience Yardley when there was a special time of season, whether it's Valentine's Day red and, you know, just things like that. So I just throwing it out there. Again, my feelings will not be heard if people don't agree with that.
Oh.
I was thinking, if somebody asks for ribbons and they don't ask for lights, I don't know if we want to start adding to people's requests on our own, that I think you're kind of opening up Pandora's Box, that every time something comes up, they might say, "But you did it for them," or, I don't know, I'm just thinking, you know...
Yeah, yeah.
...to look at, at the future.
Certainly, yeah. So, so the request before us is for ribbons. Any other discussion on the request before us, or the general, to Councilperson Stump's point, our general stance on these requests?
No, so I think, I think I'm good. I would just say that, so October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and so we might, we might get some requests coming down the line at the next meeting. I know we did the lights pink for that last year, and so if they do put something in, then are we, are we saying it's this, or can we consider that on its own as its own thing and see if there's a way we can do both that won't be too much?
Yeah, I mean, this, these are going to be the ribbons, so there are other ways to celebrate other things, I think.
Gotcha. Okay. No, that's, I think I'm good. Like I said, I just wanted to, I, I'm in support of it, I just wanted to have a discussion about it to kind of bring up the protocol.
Just for the record, I, I don't think we should pursue the lighting change, but I just wanted to throw it out there in case there was an interest.
Sure. Mayor Harding?
Just a point of clarification, this application is for lamp posts, telephone poles, and trees.
That's a good point.
Any other comments on this one? Any comments from the public? Yes, Ms. Corsi?
What is the painted, what group is that? Like, we want to know, what does that represent?
Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Okay.
And just to clarify, too, this is just along Main Street and Afton Avenue, so it's just our downtown business district.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Before you, you have a finance report dated July 15, 2025. Are there any issues, comments, questions, concerns? Otherwise, it will be accepted by consensus. All right, engineers report, Mr. Foley, please.
Yes, thank you. We've issued our engineers' report. Are there any questions before we get to the two items on our agenda?
Jumped way ahead.
Yes.
I'm going to put you on pause, sorry. I scrolled too far. Let's go back to our brand-new police chief's report, please, sir.
Yes, Madam President. Thank you. Thank you again, everybody, for the kind words. I appreciate that. So for the month of June, the statistics are as follows for June of 2025. For the month of June, the Yardley Borough Police Department handled 761 calls for service. Of those 761 calls for service, 107 of them were conducted traffic stops, and 304 of them were proactive premise checks done by the officers. We issued three parking tickets, we issued 58 traffic citations, we investigated six accidents, and we conducted four arrests. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And the manager's report.
I'll keep my comments brief, since we have a full agenda. For June, the real estate transfer tax was about $8,000. We received our grant reimbursement for the PICO lot in an amount of approximately $58,000. I'm sure you all noticed, the new trash can was installed in Buttonwood Park. We're working on street signs. I have a new vendor that has very reasonably cost, so I ordered one complete section, so Look Over Lane and all of that way is going to be changed out within the next couple of weeks. We received a few quotes on our police roof, and they're all mid to high 90s. We completed all the final paperwork for our sidewalk loan. Everything was signed off on, so we're ready to roll with that. Snow bids have been advertised. I received one sealed bid so far. We still have a week, they're due on 7/25, and I anticipate getting a couple more for write-to-knows, as we all learned. There was an uptick this month, or last month, there was nine that were pretty considerable. Zoning hearing, we had none. Zoning permits, we had eight. We have one new business coming to town, six building permits, and that is my report for this month.
Thank you.
One more thing. The rooster saga is over. The birds are no longer here.
Oh, I thought they were dead.
Yeah, so we are no longer a bird town. Sorry.
You just ruined my whole report.
May I make one comment to the manager?
Sure.
Sorry, did you hear that?
Yes, go ahead, worry.
Okay, yes, thank you. Just that I ran across a roofer that might be good for this project. I wondered if you're still taking bids, if you'd like me to set up or send this contractor in to give you another estimate. Is that possible, doable?
That, yeah, that's fine.
Great, thank you.
I, I'm sorry, I just was, wanted to thank the manager for initiating the swapping out of the signs. Our sign, which was knocked off its pedestal, has been replaced, and I just wanted to recognize that. Thank you very much.
I wanted to add, add one other comment relative to transfer tax. The 84, or whatever the number was, 8305 is what we got last month. That puts us right at 62% of the total budget for the year with 58% of the days done. So we're right on, we're right on, so far. But we all know, it can go way up or way down, but...
We know you were nervous about that number, though.
I'm still nervous, I'm still nervous, but at least we're not doggy paddling to catch up right now. Yeah.
Speaker, Council President?
Yes.
On a different subject, are we, is Council K excusing Chief Golden? He has some people...
You just, you just got sworn in. Wait, wait, what's going on?
Thank you.
And Solicitor Griffin, were you making a face about the roofing? Anything there, any issues there with the bidding process or anything?
Yeah, we just have to make sure that it complies with formal bidding requirements.
Please, Andrew, were just estimates. They're not actual sealed bids. We were just getting the estimates so we can apply for the funding, so they were just...
Okay, all right, understood.
Yeah, excellent. All right, consideration of the budget calendar?
Yes. So before you, I have the 2026 budget calendar. Can you believe we already started our budget for next year? Budget requests have gone out to all the committees, all of council, and all of the staff, engineering, and vendors. We hope to have, we will have the budget adopted by December 16. So before you is our procedure, our timeline, everything that we have to follow, so I'm asking for approval of the budget calendar.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
Removed.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Councilperson Scher, seconded by Councilperson Segal Morris. Any questions from council?
I just wanted to make one comment. Everybody got a request back the end of June, the first stage, to submit their 2026 requests, et cetera. Please also answer the question of how are you going to do from July through December, because it's important to know whether you're going to be under budget or over budget, hopefully not over budget, so that we can factor that in going forward.
Sounds good. And that includes committees of council, if you have plans for grants, et cetera, right?
Right, et cetera.
Right, any comments or questions from the public on the budget calendar? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. All right, back to you, Mr. Foley. My apologies.
I'm done.
I was wondering why you were staring at me so blankly.
Thank you. We've issued our engineers' report within the council packet. Are there any questions, or we'll move on to the, the two items?
Just a comment, on the, the section under budget review where you show the year-to-date invoice versus budget.
Yes.
On grant services, the budget was $28,400, not $28,000, but, and as we all recall, last year, in, in like November of last year, we approved doing the Dolington, using monies from 2025 to do the grant that we submitted for the Dolington extension. So that was 6,506 was carryover costs from last year. So the balance, the balance to go in grants, if the one we're going to talk about in a few minutes, which is the Afton sidewalks, comes in at 6,900, we'll have $2,700 less for grants for the rest of the year, which means we're done with grants. We can't have any more grants, because you rarely do one for 2,700 bucks. So, so if we're going to do other grants, obviously, we'd have to take money from a different area to do it, but, so the grants are, we've done a lot this year, obviously, in the first half.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
And I thank you, Mr. Foley, separately as well, but when we presented the Afton Avenue project for grant approval, I believe there was 14,000 left. Is that about right? It's about half done? And 5,000 of the Afton Avenue grant was paid for by a resident, which is actually on this agenda. So I'm, I'm stuck with the math. Where, how did we get down to 2,700?
Because the, you didn't have 13,000 or whatever that number left, because the budget numbers you were shown did not include the carryover from last year, which was a negative carryover. We spent an extra $6,500 last year on purpose. We all decided to do that. Remember, we decided to get one in at the end of November, and we took it, we were putting the budget together, and we agreed to take it out of the 284, out of the 2025 budget, and spend it in 2024. We consciously made that decision at the end of last year.
I remember that.
Yeah. So that was, that's the decision that we did. That's why I remember you, remember you were sitting here and say, "All right, and I agreed, go ahead and do it," because we weren't covered.
Right, no, but, but you didn't include that when you gave us the number before the Afton, that presentation of the Afton grant.
Oh.
You're saying that that didn't include that carryover?
It did in the, in the, in the, what I sent to you a couple of weeks ago included all that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then are you including the $5,000 towards...
Right, because I'm saying we're only going to spend, if it comes in at 6.9, the application, then I'm, I'm assuming we're only going to spend 1.9, because 5 is covered by donation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's how you get back to the 2.7 left, yeah. Okay, that's all I had.
Thanks for the clarity, I appreciate, yeah, thank you.
Okay, are there any other further questions on our engineers' report? Or we could just move on to the resolution for the Multimodal Fund Grant through DCED for the West Avenue, West Afton Avenue Sidewalk Improvement Project. Included within your packet is the, the resolution, as well as the preliminary cost estimate for the project, and just a reminder, this project will, is only for improvements within Yardley Borough, up to the existing sidewalk between Brice and Look Over Lane, as well as it does include some improvements to the bridge as well, and significant stormwater improvements, too. So the, the amount for our construction, for our estimate for the grant is $1,517,779.70.
I had a question. I probably missed it, but I was looking through the costs, and I couldn't find where it said you would cut through that person's lawn to put a sidewalk there, like that, and like a retaining wall there, because that, I would have to think that that's kind of...
Yeah, I mean, for, this is a conceptual, we'll have to get further into the design for that, so we prepared this conceptual estimate for this grant.
So this is an, like, an early estimate?
An early estimate, correct.
So it's probably going to be a lot more?
Potentially, you know, within the elements that we have in here, you know, it, it could cover it. Once you get further into the design of the preliminary design and how the right-of-way works out, how the alignment needs to work out coordinating with, with council and Public Works, we generated a newer estimate at that time, once we get into the, you know, further into our preliminary design effort for that.
Let me, let me just jump, jump on that bandwagon for a moment that Councilperson Scher brought up, because it is a good point. I mean, in the past, what we've done, especially more recently, is make sure that we're accounting for things like inflation and expected cost over, just because we have a long-term history of applying for a grant, thinking it's going to cover, like, all of North Main Street, and it only covers a little part, a portion of it. So we do want to make sure that this grant is, to the best of your knowledge and abilities, if we were to get this grant, that this would cover the project. If you have reservations about that, then, you know, we want to make sure that we're accounting for those in the application, because we don't want to be stuck without enough funding.
Well, it doesn't sound like we're anticipating the whole project, though.
No, this does. You know, the, how we've been performing this work is to, is to seek the construction budget, and where our shortfall is going to be is, is the, is the design effort, is typically it. We could always reverse the way of doing these grants of trying to seek those zero-match grants for planning purposes to cover our design, and then they could be more shelf-ready. But with, just right now of how the, the sequence of the grants, the DCED MTF grant is, is really logical for the sidewalk project, as we've utilized that for North Main Street and Dolington Road, and then we've sought, you know, with the LSA grant, is to seek for reimbursement for our engineering services. But within this grant, we did, you know, include inflation for like two years on it, so there is some elements, but, but if we, if we start budgeting engineering services through the borough budget, we could get further into our design and create a better, get a more shelf-ready project so that we could seek the construction budget here. So, you know, in the past for Phase Three, no, Phase Two, I'm sorry, and Phase Three, we did notice those shortfalls of, of budgets and other design elements, so we did see... of budgets and other design elements. So we did seek additional funding for Phase Three, if you recall. So we are pretty, pretty well, you know, funded for the construction at this point for Phase Three. So I do feel pretty, pretty well for now on, you know, the design efforts for, for this. For the earth moving, that is, you know, those costs are a little bit smaller compared to, you know, the pipe work and so on. And we do have some clearing and grubbing and bulk site grading, you know, incorporated into here as well.
And you have the pipe work in here.
Excuse me?
Pipe work is in there.
And stormwater is included, yes.
Yeah. So, so just to kind of add, summarize what you're saying, and add some kind of history to this, is we have typically, like North Main Street is a great example. We learned, we improved as we went along, but it did take several grants to get it done. And you have to start somewhere. But I did notice that our success rate of obtaining grants went way up as we received grants, started doing work, needed more money. There was a desire from the state to partner with us to get these projects done. So it's got to start somewhere. I'm very, very happy, a lot of people in this community are very happy, that this is at the stage that it's at. It's a great thing for children, for people walking, for people biking, whatever, to connect the communities, and also for stormwater, because that is one of the roots where there is a lot of water coming down that hill. And to have some more control, it won't be perfect, because there's the other side, but to have some control over where that water goes is a win for everybody, especially the people who live there.
Then the one last design element that we did include in this grant application is for the, the pedestrian crossing on West Afton Avenue, as we removed that from the Yardley grant scope, and we moved it into here. So that's included in this budget as well, in this grant request.
Okay. I have four questions. Hopefully, we'll go fast. First one is, in here, you'll have 10% for engineering inspection, $135,000. What is your estimate of what the real engineering costs will be?
I have to prepare that first. And what my goal is to prepare a, a proposal so that we could, you know, coordinate with Public Works and look at it for how it works out versus this budget here for the reimbursement, as well as, you know, the budget for 2025.
So is the plan to wait until we receive this and then do an LSA grant, like the approach we did on Dolington? We got the money for the construction part, and then we went in for the design services? Is that the approach we're going to take here?
That, I mean, is, right now, that, trying to pursue the LSA grant helps, you know, helps the budget for Yardley Borough, you know, to seek additional, you know, cost for that. So, you know, the one thing Manager Johnson and I have spoken about is, is potentially seeking an LSA grant for the, for the engineering. And hopefully, we hear maybe October on, you know, last year's grant submission for Dolington Road Design Services.
Okay.
It's like Lego. This is like the big piece, but it's not the only piece.
Right, understand. The second question I had is, relative to runoff, and this is done, I assume this whole estimate was done independent of Lower Makefield, so under the assumption that they do nothing coming down the hill, right? This is just us getting this sandy run. But when you went and sized the stormwater management and all of that, if LMT down the road decides to do their part of the sidewalk, has the engineering that's gone into us at the bottom of the hill there anticipated what the stormwater management at the bottom of the hill needs to be when they do their part? Understand what I mean?
I understand, you know, further design and analysis will have to be performed to, to fine-tune the stormwater from a conceptual. We did look at that. Right at the north of Sandy Run Road, you could see the existing inlet that's sitting on that north side. So our anticipation is potentially stubbing our storm sewer out to the middle of Sandy One Road. And in the future, Lower Makefield could tie into our storm sewer system as opposed to going against the, you could see the embankment adjacent to University Drive and down that roadway. So, you know, further design will have to be done. We did size, we have a pretty good slope on the road, but we'd have to do further design analysis. And right now, the, the budget to prepare the grant is a, you know, is pretty lean. And so we've, you know, we've, we've captured a good concept stormwater for that.
Okay, I guess my third question is, do you believe, since we have two weeks to go before submittal, that we're going to be able to get this submittal in for 6,900 or under?
It will, will be at, right at the budget.
Right at the budget, okay. And then my fourth thing is just a comment on the scope and size. The cost that you put in here, when you compare it to Phase Three, Phase Three, which we're about to break around on soon, hopefully, is 1,150 square feet. It came out to, based on the construction cost that you'll see in a minute, came out to $825 a linear foot. This West Afton extension, just the construction cost, we're not talking about engineering at all, is 950 feet. It's going to come out to 1,358 a linear foot. So what's in the construction budget is 64% higher cost per foot than what we're doing on Phase Three. So you can look at that one of two ways. You go, wow, that seems really high. But maybe it's to take into account that it might be two years before we really are ready to award this, and maybe we needed that big to eat that up. But it is a very big number for 950 square feet, just, not square feet, sorry, linear feet. But I understand that it's a long process, and investing 1.9K to get the process moving is okay. But we got a long ways to go, and we got to make sure we're real tight on the, particularly engineering costs going forward.
It's like, it's like the salad bar, you know, it's like, whatever, $15 a pound, you can take all lettuce, or you can take all the beef, you know. And so if you look at linear feet, like as an average, it makes sense. And I totally get what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think this is one of the reasons that nobody has taken this to the point of actually, you know, getting a grant, is because it's a complex project and it's intimidating. So, you know, it's true. It's just too, it's a lot per square foot, because it's complex. That's, that's my read on it. But I'd love to hear what, I think.
Yeah. Well, it's also, also when you compare it to Lower Makefield's Taylorsville Road extent, or whatever you want to call it, piece, it's, it's at least 30% higher per linear foot than that. And that, that's because of the engineering complications, probably, or the anticipation of it being a couple years in the future. But it's a, it's not an inexpensive undertaking, in comparison to other sidewalks.
It's not cheap. Sidewalks, I wish it were, but it's not.
I have just a few questions, if you're done, Don.
Yeah.
So kind of tagging on what Michelle said with the erosion and sediment controls, clearing and grubbing, bulk site grading, there's 65,000 in there for that. Is there any place you would anticipate us really needing much of that beside that one corner? Or were you thinking with that corner in mind when you?
Well, I mean, for that is, is really, there's, there's a lot of embankment and slope on the one side. So we would be looking at potentially further providing additional fill. This is all conceptual.
Sure, sure, I get it.
And, and right now, my design is on one sheet of paper. We haven't talked to any owners, you know, this type of deal. So we're getting into the weeds at this point.
Okay.
But from a stormwater, from an erosion semi-control play standpoint, is we're looking at, you know, what we're, what are concerned about is, is the safety of the pedestrians along the embankment, potentially increasing that embankment width and adding additional slope there. Then we have to stabilize that embankment, too. So that would be on that side. There could be something during our design process that we look at, we want to do something on the other side of the road as well.
South side, correct.
Right now, we're keeping it on the south side of it, utilizing the existing sidewalk that's on the bridge. But we do need to do some structural improvements on the, on the, on the, on the bridge guard rail to, you know, to assist with the pedestrian safety. Also replacing the guard rail and incorporating maybe a four-foot-high chain link fence along that as well, to keep those pedestrians, you know, on our sidewalk.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Great work on this, Pat.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion on the table yet? I don't think we have a motion on the table yet. So let's get a motion on the table to approve Resolution 25-07, application to the MTF grant for West Afton Avenue.
I'll make that motion, or I'll second the motion.
This was made by Councilperson Finer, seconded by Councilperson Sump. Any further questions? Don, do you have four more questions?
No, I don't have anymore.
Okay.
I did it on one shot. I tried to.
Any other questions from council? Any other questions from the public? All right, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? I abstain. Motion carries 601. Great, one more for you, Mr. Foley.
Okay, thank you. Within the council's packet, we did, we opened up the bids for North Main Street sidewalk project Phase Three. The bids were open on June 26. We did receive bids from four firms. The lowest bid was GMB Construction Group in the amount of $948,589.39 for the construction of our bid documents. We're looking for, you know, council to, to consider, you know, contracting the construction with GMB Construction for the North Main Street Phase Three project.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Finer, seconded by Councilperson Applebaum. Discussion from council?
I have two questions. I should know the answer to the first one, but I apologize. I'm getting old. Is, is GMB the group that did either Phase One or Phase Two?
Did Phase Two.
Oh, cool. So it's the same guys who did Phase Two? Okay, good to hear. And then the, the other question I had is, I know we had to kind of cobble together engineering costs to, to get through this one. Are you still feeling good that the, that we got enough engineering money to get through Phase Three?
I do. Right now, we have, right now, the remaining engineering services that we have in invoice was $47,613.75. So I feel pretty good, you know, for, for getting through here. You know, there was a lot of coordination completed by Manager Johnson and the Public Works Committee coordinating that effort. So I do feel pretty good on.
And you got a recent track record. It wasn't that long ago, we did Phase Two.
Correct, correct.
Okay, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to slip in a third question. I forgot. When do you anticipate groundbreaking, and how long the process?
As I, as we mentioned before, is, is really our first step, is to engage PICO to relocate the gas service. We do have a, earlier this month, we did provide our, our microstation files to, to PICO so that they could work on their engineering. I do have a, a request into our PICO contact, and once I get more of an update, I'll let, let the council know. I did reach out to GMB Construction. One of the first steps is PICO would like the stormwater main, you know, pretty much surveyed out of where we're proposing that, because they're, they're relocating the gas main for our storm sewer system. So Andrea from GMB said, you know, get us the CAD files, and we'll start working on that as well. So once I learn more about the, the gas relocation, you know, I'll inform the team on that.
Did we, in Phase Two, did we rely on PICO to do anything? Did they have to move anything?
No, one thing is, is originally Phase, Phase Two was part of Phase One, so PICO already relocated the gas main during.
Oh, so they sort of did.
They did that.
During Phase One?
Yes, yes.
All right. Okay, well, hopefully, you can move them quickly. Thanks.
I went back over emails from the time when we were in Phase Two, and the, there was one commonality theme, but while we were constructing, and that was around communication with residents. So I'm wondering if we, what we, have we learned, and what's our communication plan this time around? What communication has already been sent out? What will the touchpoints be with homeowners that are impacted on the street?
I think as, as we coordinate with PICO, what we'll do is, is, obviously, we're going to get the schedule with PICO, and then we'll be coordinating with the Public Works Committee and Manager Johnson, so we can inform these residents, you know, you know, the process and what the stage and the goals of this project will be.
Do we have emails, phone numbers, and addresses for everyone, or can we collect those? We have emails for everyone?
Have them already.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we'll.
Door to door to collect that and meet the residents, and we have all that. And Manager Johnson has a spreadsheet with all the information that's been, to be the case. So there's, there's a good back and forth communication with everyone.
Perfect.
Which is great.
Thank you, Public Works and Manager Johnson. That's excellent. All right?
Yeah, and I'd like to just add to, you know, how exciting this is, and also to appreciate the work of our engineer, Pat Foley, on this project, because these projects have traditionally been like, there are so many areas where you can't really predict what's going to happen, and they go off course. And they take a lot of effort to keep them on pace. And we're, we're very shortly, very, very slightly behind the milestones that we set for this so far. And that's a big deal, because, and, you know, you don't know how many revisions you're going to have with Pendo. So we anticipated, too, it was like kind of three or four. You don't know what's going to happen with PICO with the gas line, because they don't even want to talk about moving it until you've got a construction bid booked. So there's all these things that happen that you, you just can't predict. You can, you can kind of estimate. And some of the times, these projects have taken years longer than we expect them to. But this one is more or less on schedule. And that is a large part of that, is the work that Engineer Foley has done, and also the other members of Public Works, Andrew Johnson. Everyone's been on top of this one, and they see it at this stage.
Any other comments from, any comments from the public? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Mr. Foley is asked to be excused.
That concludes my report.
Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
All right, solicitors, a report, please.
Yeah, Madam President, just two items quickly. The first item is Resolution 25-08. That involves basically earmarking the, the donation that was previously discussed for $5,000, accepting it, depositing it, and making sure that it's only utilized for the preparation and submission of the application.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Councilperson Carlson, seconded by Councilperson Finer. Any discussion from council on this?
I'd like to appreciate the resident who made that contribution. It shows how important sidewalks are. Imagine any of you in this room right now, what it would take, if you take $5,000 of your own money and say, I want this sidewalk badly enough. I'm willing to put $5,000 towards getting a grant application. It gives me chills to say that. I appreciate it so much. It's a little disappointing that we have to go to that extent to apply for a grant. I think that we need to really think about the payback we get from grants. When we apply for grants, the rate of return is astronomical. And we need to continue to prioritize funding for grants, so we don't have to ask residents to shell out five grand to pay for a grant. That said, I just, I tremendously appreciate that. And I, and there are good people in this community. So thank you.
And just a note of clarity, we did not approach somebody soliciting the donation. It was volunteered, and we graciously accepted. So I appreciate the Lower Makefield resident, actually, who made this donation to save the taxpayers of Yardley Borough money. The resident is a former Borough resident, and so it's just a great way of how municipalities are working together to make an impact.
Any other comments from council? Any other comments from council? Comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Abstain? Motion carries unanimously.
And the second item that I have in the agenda is authorization to send the special event ordinance to the planning commissions and then assuming that we don't get any substantive comments that change the language of the ordinance to then advertise the ordinance. I note that the language is substantially the same as it was before. I made some formatting changes, some recodifying changes, some adjustments to the zoning ordinance, as well as there was language pertaining to processions and assemblages already in the code of ordinances that needed to be addressed. So that is the majority of the changes that were made from the prior draft. So we're just asking for authorization. We'll send it to our planning commission as well as the Bucks County Planning Commission, see what comments we get back. And again, if they're not substantive, we would go ahead and advertise. If they are, it'd be back before you to consider those changes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve for advertisement, special event ordinance? Uh, move, yeah, send to the planning commission. Motion is made by Councilperson Scherer, seconded by Councilperson Siegel-Mars. Discussion from council?
Yeah, I just want to be clear on one thing here. I don't want to pay to advertise because it's expensive, believe it or not, until both those planning commissions have come back. Because isn't, is this the first time it's gone to planning commission? I think it is, right?
Yeah, that's correct. It will be.
So it's kind of significant. So I would like to see, make sure it's sequential. In other words, maybe we just approve, go into the planning commissions now and then come back later and approve to advertise.
Right, so the way that it works and basically to save time is if the planning commissions, they come back with comments and those comments are not substantive, they don't result in any kind of changes to the language, then we would go ahead and advertise after that fact. Wouldn't have to come back before you to get that authorization. The ordinance would just be in front of you for approval at that point. If the comments we get back are substantive, I'm not going to advertise. I will put it back on the agenda so that it's before you to consider those changes and then you'd reauthorize me to advertise.
By doing it this way, we could potentially save two weeks.
Exactly.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure we don't double spend.
I just, to Don's point, I never really understand the rush with something that is.
Yeah.
I understand some things are crucial. But this thing, you know, like we had in the recent council session, we had stuff coming in where there was basically a lot of conversations happening with Harvest Day, about Harvest Day that seemed like there were conversations about where to put it and it wasn't really clear what the process is for deciding that. And this seems to go right ahead into giving more authority to our events planning process without really uncovering how that process works. At least not to me. I'm on council. I don't really understand it, but I don't, I didn't like what I saw at the last meeting. Something seemed off to me. And I think I'm fine with sending it to the planning commission. I've been working with them as their liaison. They're really on top of their game. And I think that, why not let them see it? Let them figure out what makes sense to them and come back to us and then we can vote to advertise. I don't need to say two weeks. We've had events for over 100 years in this borough. Two weeks doesn't make a difference to me.
And again, if the planning commission were to have substantive comments that would adjust the language of the ordinance, it could come back before you and it would have to come back before you by law for us to make those changes before it was advertised. But I don't have a preference either way. It's ultimately your decision.
Given the late hour and that we have nine folks to interview who have been waiting very patiently, I'm going to ask that the emotion be amended just to send to planning and not give authorization to advertise at this time. I don't think we, any of us want to get into that conversation right now. So. Any further comment from council? Any comments?
I agree that's the way to go. Because it may not be just planning that may have substantial changes or not, but I don't feel like we've gotten deep into it either yet. And so this gives us an opportunity to look at it deeper as well.
Yeah, absolutely understood. I think I asked for it to be put on the agenda this way so that it's clear if we were looking to save the time that we could, but I understand the amendment and.
I would ask council members if you have specific comments, questions, concerns about any borough process that during a council meeting at nine o'clock might not be the best time to bring those up, that we should be having conversations and refining our processes continuously so that when we are voting on something, there's not lingering questions that we have from a prior council meeting. All right, so we have a motion on the table. Any further comments from council?
I'll just concur with Mr. Carlson and Mr. Finer, and I'll leave it at that.
Any comments from the public?
You just said that because it's nine o'clock, it's not a good time to discuss the process. This event ordinance, when does the public get to see it? I mean, when do, it seems like it went from zero to sixty and somehow got lost in between.
So we've been reviewing drafts of it for 18 months and this is the process that all ordinances go through. Council gets them to a point where we're happy with them and they go to planning. You're welcome to go to the planning meeting when they're discussing it. And then we, if we vote to advertise, that's the point when it's available for public inspection. This is how every ordinance, since I've been on council for eight years, has been done.
But when you said to Councilman Finer that we shouldn't discuss that here, I noticed that a lot of meetings, it seems like, especially from all those emails and text messages and everything, you seem to have a lot of discussions prior to the meeting because there's not enough time at the meeting. But you really, I really think it's important that all of that, like, backroom stuff be done at the meeting.
No, Councilman Finer said he had issues, questions that came up at a prior council meeting. No one, has anyone up here heard any of those questions who's working on the ordinance? My comment was just that those questions should be posed so that we can refine the draft so that we're not wasting money advertising something that somebody's going to vote down because they have lingering questions. That was my point. We are a council. We work outside of these meetings. We have to. It is not possible to get business done, as I have told you many times, at, you know, 14 meetings a year or 12 meetings a year or whatever. We have working sessions. So get elected onto council if you want to be in the conversation while the ordinance is on draft.
Well, that's very transparent of you to say that. So you're just basically saying that you're going to keep holding all these important discussions behind the scenes and unless you're elected to council, you're not going to have access to it.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that we were elected by the Borough of Yardley to draft laws for this town and that is what we are doing. There is nothing wrong with that.
The people don't get to see it until the last, until it's advertised.
We've projected it onto the screen. You can go back and watch the meetings. It's been in draft for 18 months.
Yeah.
What else do you want me to say?
Can I ask a question about that? Because I don't remember this for 18 months. I'm not sure it's been in draft. I know that there are no public meetings advertised outside of the meetings that are advertised. And I'm not aware of any, any, any work on this until much more recently than that.
No, it started in the January of 2024 or maybe even 2023 and I can send that information to you.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Maybe time flies faster than I remember, but it seems to me like it's about half that.
I think the people that work on it, it feels longer.
Right, but I understand now that there are no public meetings outside of the ones that are advertised. So how can work happen on it? That's what I'm confused about.
Only here. We have only discussed it here. Like, we brought it to.
Here, I only remember it for.
No, we were told.
Maybe it was 18 months.
Just give us an outline. No, an outline isn't enough. Come back with the whole thing. Oh, this whole thing is too much.
And that's been 18 months?
Yes.
Yeah, it's been through many iterations.
I just wondered.
If you could send me the beginning of that chain, that'd be helpful.
It's in your emails. It's in your emails.
Okay, 18 months would be January of 2024.
Correct.
So I'll look there. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment that this process of not having draft ordinances go out till the end. Those of you that remember short-term lodging? You know how many times I put the PowerPoint up there? That, basically, by the time the actual ordinance came out, it was all the stuff that was on the PowerPoint that put into words that work for the solicitor. So, you know, we put it out there and that's how the public knew what was going to be in there. There weren't surprises at the end because everybody knew what was in it. And so that's the way we can do it, is by summarizing what's moving through these committees. It's not trying to hide anything.
That was a great model for how to do things. Because you're right, it was potentially very controversial and by the end, it was almost born in a good way.
Right, and we never put out the draft until the end.
All right, any other comments, questions, concerns on this? I think we have a motion on the table. Any other comments from the public on this one? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. All right, mayor and council, does anyone have any burning, anything burning that they wish to report this evening in their council member or mayor's report?
Let's, I would say we could skip all of this and go straight to the interviews, unless anybody has anything.
I have one, I have one comment. I'll make it quick because I'm liaison to the sewer authority. And the sewer authority has requested and officially through their minutes at the last meeting, they were discussing a request, I think, by Public Works to try to start working on the Judy's Garden before the sewer work goes in through that property. And they have requested that if at all possible, we don't do that and we let them get the sewer, the key sewer lines in before we start working seriously on the garden. So I think that's a prudent thing to do. The one good thing about the sewer project is that once, and it should go out to bid soon, they're working with Ocwen, a couple issues. It should be going out in August or the latest September. Once that is awarded, the first area where they will start will be going under the canal, which requires the property there to be used, and going under North Main Street too. Those are the two areas they'll start. They have to do those areas first because that sets the level, the pitch rate, if you will, for the sewer. And so then they work back from there. So hopefully, it won't be that long a period of time and we're so close to getting work started on there that I recommend that we move forward, that we do what they request and not try to get the garden changes started too soon.
So I will just speak to that. I'll do a brief report just to follow up on that because there's stuff going on that you may not be aware of. Which is that the planning commission is working on this right now. They're doing fabulous work on it. I really appreciate their work. There's two engineers and an architect, as well as the rest of the team there. And what they're trying to figure out is, they have overlaid at no cost to the borough because they're volunteering their time, the sewer permanent easement, the temporary easement for the work, as well as the Judy's Garden design that was approved by zoning. And they're working out kind of a more streamlined version that they're going to recommend to council that allows for Judy's Garden not to impede on the, either of the easements or, and to, you would, you will see when you get it that there is potentially a way to do some of this work that doesn't involve the temporary or permanent easement. So there is good movement on that and that conversation will happen. And I think that once we have dates from the sewer, when the construction will actually happen, I think that'd be a great piece to add to decision-making. So I kind of, it's all fluid right now, but I'm glad that there is another part of this happening, which is to rethink the positioning of where is the statue going to be? What makes the most sense? Where is the shade? Where is the water? How do you, how do you reduce the impact of the project? All sorts of questions that are very good planning commission questions.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Councilperson Applebaum?
Yes. In consideration for the hour, I will cut my report from 10 items to one. That was a joke. I just wanted to briefly mention that both councilmen, Stoppa and myself, attended the quarterly meeting of DCNR, the Department of Conservation Natural Resources, located Buckstone Farm in Washington Crossing just last week. Our specific interest in that meeting was a project noted in the recently updated Gantt chart, which is the state's recommendations that will be made on repairs for potential replacement. Remember, it's just the recommendation of the Aqueduct, the Yardley Aqueduct. At this point, there is money in escrow, if I'm using that term correctly, that the late councilman Mike Fitzpatrick received on our behalf for that project there nearly 30 years ago. And so depending on what recommendations the state makes and depending on what council may decide in the future, there is money for repairs. If I recall, council voted in support of repair. Though not a DCNR project, there was further discussion about the Bucks County 55 Bridge replacement located east of Main Street at South Canal and how or if it will affect water levels during the replacement. FYI, replacement is targeted for 2026. The commission continues to address issues surrounding water, oh, sorry. It's issues regarding, revolving around the water. They also stated, and this is my last comment, that the upcoming, and I know this pertains to the sewer project, that the upcoming 2026 sewer project going up to the canal is not seen as an issue. And so there won't be any issues between, as far as they were concerned at that time, between DCNR and what we're trying to get done there. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else, discussion items? All right. I will turn it over to the Community Outreach Committee. I think you have one matter before the interviews on the agenda.
Yeah, so I think that was just for a point of clarification. Both myself and Mr. Carlson, Manager Johnson, we went back and watched the previous meetings. And we were just looking for clarity on whether we're appointing three or four people to the committee tonight. I think the discussion was initially three was what we voted on, but then with the resignation we had from the committee, are we leaving that vacant? Are we backfilling? I don't think we really came to a conclusion on that. And so my question was, how many seats do we have open before we begin interviewing people?
So I would recommend just make a motion, whatever you prefer, and see if it carries. That's the best way to handle it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
For the amount of people, yes.
Oh, I make a motion that we choose three people to the.
Okay, motion was to appoint three people. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Scherer, seconded by Councilperson Siegel-Mars. Discussion?
Yes. How many people are currently on the commission minus the person who resigned?
Five.
Sorry?
Um.
I think he said five.
Is it five? So it's.
Four, plus there's going to be someone from the police force joining.
That's five. And then you're, Ms. is proposing three?
No, wait. We have five plus one joining, right? Because Linda was six, yeah. So we have five currently, one joining from the police, so six.
But that, one of the five resigned, is that?
No, all five of those people are still on. It was.
Okay, I apologize.
So the number six person was Linda who resigned is being replaced by somebody from the police? So we'd still have nine total? Is that what you're saying?
Right. Well, no, just in terms of when we last discussed the composition of the committee, we decided that we would like an actual officer who's serving with the police force to be on the committee, not necessarily as Linda's replacement.
Right, but that would still be a committee, that would count as a committee member. So we would wind up with nine total at the end of it.
If we appoint three, that's correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion from council?
So I'm, I'm in favor of four members, not three. So how do we, how do we handle that? Okay.
Any discussion from the public?
Yeah, just a point of process. If he's making a formal motion to amend to four, then we would need to. would need to see if there's a second for the four. Then there'd be discussion on that item. If it passes, it passes. If it fails, we're back to the motion for three.
Okay, so, I'll make the motion to amend to four.
I can add.
Okay, motion was made by Counselperson Stumpf and seconded by Counselperson Finer. Discussion from council.
Can I just say, we have how many interviewees here? Like, is it 10? 10 people applied?
Nine. We had one, nine, because we have one that dropped out from the process today.
So, we need four more out of nine. I mean, to me, it's just a diversity of ideas, experiences. You know, if the result is to get to a better answer, to find the best pathway forward, more diversity of knowledge and experience and background seems helpful. So, I say, we got nine, we pick four of the nine, sounds good to me.
Yeah, and I would just say too, because we had a resignation, we're filling a spot. We're not just making it up out of the air based on how many people applied. I would think if we're only doing three, then we need to vote to dissolve that position that we had a resignation from, just like when we have resignations from any of our boards or other boards or commissions, or resignation from council, we fill the spot.
I think four is the right number because at the last meeting, if you go look at the tape, we said, you said, and we all agreed to four.
No, we just didn't vote it.
But you just didn't vote on it, exactly. So, now we're voting on it.
Thank you for reminding me of that. It's been a busy month.
All right, any comments from the public on this motion? I'll leave it vested in. All right, I will call the question. All those in favor of four members, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 6-1-0. All right, Mr. Stumpf.
All righty. So, first off, my apologies for the lateness of the hour. I know it's 9:18, but you guys got to see, I actually thought about moving this up to the first thing in the meeting, but then when I was thinking about it, I thought, you know, there's a lot that goes into behind the scenes of local government that is boring government business. And it's not always the, you know, the back and forth and the excitement and the high energy. And so, if you're going to be on this committee, it's going to be not a crazy long commitment, but there is a time commitment to it. And, you know, there's going to be elements of it where there's lots of meetings and going on. And I'm like, well, I think it might be good to give people a glimpse of how our local government works and the processes leading up to that, rather than just we do the applicants and then people go home. So, how we're going to do this procedurally, and Paula, can you help me here with some of the, since we've done this before? So, we're going to have each person interviewed here one at a time. And so, the people who aren't being interviewed are going to be in a side room. So, you're not hearing what's going on. And to make the process as objective as possible, how we're gonna, once we have heard all nine of the interviews, and one of them couldn't be here this evening, was interviewed by Zoom, the reason why we allowed this is we had somebody that had a pre-planned vacation who reached out to us. And when we first advertised this, we did not say that applicants were going to be interviewed at this council meeting. That was the idea we had after, that I thought was a great idea, especially since we're talking about transparency. Why don't we just be extra transparent and do it at a council meeting? All seven people are here. It's not just me and Michelle. It's the full council. It's anybody in the public. And, but because we didn't advertise that, I thought it would be a good idea to do the interview on Zoom. So, Michelle and I conducted that with Manager Johnson. Was that yesterday or two days ago? I've been working such long hours. I think it was yesterday, wasn't it? So, we did it yesterday to make the process fair. We did it before. And so, yeah, so we'll be playing that interview when we get to that candidate. And then, after the process is done, we have some index cards that each member of council can write down for people that they think might be lead candidates, and then read those aloud. What we'll do is we'll tally them up. So, it's, it's almost like a little bit of a hybrid of a ranked choice system in that that will kind of create a pool of people. And then, we can make motions from the first people. We can either approve or deny. If we run out of people, we'll figure it out. What we didn't want to do, and Mr. Carlson, thank you for bringing this up, is we didn't just want this to be a, okay, we go through all nine interviews. And okay, does someone want to make a motion on one of these nine people? Because as we just saw, some of us had a disagreement on one of the number of people that should be on the committee. And so, that way, we're not just going as, okay, the person, the four people we just heard from are our favorites. And the person that was maybe earlier in the meeting, that we've maybe forgotten what they said, we got a little bit further away from that. So, that's how we're going to do this. I don't think we've ever done anything quite like this. So, it might be a little bit messy, but I think it's going to be the most fair and objective process. So, do we want to go with the list that's in order on the agenda just to make it simple, right?
About your interview.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not used to, to leading a segment. So, yeah, so, the first is Don Perlmutter. So, Paula, what do you want to do with the side room thing? You want to get that figured out downstairs?
I don't know how to clear out a room.
Was that the order they applied? Good as any? Yeah, that's good.
All righty. So, I'll, I'll start off and then anybody else can just jump in. There might now be questions from all seven of us. But I really have two questions, but I'll pose them as one question. And that is, how long have you lived in Yardley Borough and what, what impacted your decision to call Yardley Borough home when you first moved here?
I've been here 32 years. Can't believe it. And through floods and three different floods, and that's really what brought my attention to council. Before that, I never was involved in anything that, that sort of got you involved. So, I just, when I moved here, it was a bedroom community. I just loved it and I still do.
Paul, thank you.
I have two questions. And I'm going to ask everybody the same question. So, the first is, in your view, what are the two most important tasks for this police transition committee? And what unique qualifications do you bring to help analyze these tasks? And it's not, I don't want to review the resume. We've all read their extensive resume. We understand all that. But I really want to understand is, what do you think are the two things that are the most important that this committee gets right? And then, how can you help them get that right?
That's a great question. I'm glad you asked it. I think the most important thing is an accurate analysis of the police statistics because everything stems from that. The budget, the number of officers, the equipment. I have been, through right-to-know requests, gathering that data for 10 years. And the close, the close look at the budget is really important. The analysis of that data really tells us what type of police department we have, whether it's reactive or proactive, whether we have a community policing model, which we used to have. It was, you know, foot patrols and bike patrols. And it wasn't just everybody in their cars. But it has to be, the statistics mean everything. Everything stems from that. And if they're not done correctly, which I don't think they are being presented correctly, we need to compare them to other police departments of the same size to, and to, and to really get an accurate view of what's going on here. Because the population has not changed, but the budget has increased significantly. And another important aspect of that, I did an RTK where I looked at grant applications through the police department. And in six and a half years, according to what I received from the RTK, there were only two grant applications. And one was a mini grant for $2,400 for Cone with a Cop. That's leaving a lot of money on the table. There is a tremendous amount of money available to small departments like this. You just have to apply for them. So, that, I think, can really offset the cost of the budget also. But everything stems from those initial statistics. And they have to be compared accurately.
Thank you. My second question. While serving on this committee, how much time per week do you comfortably think you can devote to a combination of meetings, looking at current police operation analysis, and exploring different service models? In other words, I'm just looking for the time because some people have it, some people don't, and I want to make sure people know what they're getting into.
Well, I put so much time into this already. So, I could easily give 12 to 15 hours a week. I mean, I already do this just with the right-to-know request and analyzing the data. I've already done it. I mean, I've already done a number of this with exactly what you're looking for.
All right, thank you. Those are my two questions.
Okay, also asking the same questions of everyone. When, with a tenured police chief departing, there is going to be changes to the department, excuse me, perhaps there will be changes in leadership, or perhaps there are bigger changes related to staffing models and budgets. Describe a time when you were part of a committee or organization that had to evaluate or restructure an existing department or service. What was your role and how did you contribute to the decision-making process?
Well, that goes back to, my background is varied. I have a combination of academic and law enforcement and government consulting background. So, when I was in academia, I was a tenured professor. And I, we had to review the entire philosophy department and new leadership, create the whole thing from scratch. So, that was when I participated in, in that kind of review.
Thank you. What is the current operating budget of the Yardley Borough Police Department?
I think it's approximately $800,000.
Yeah, that's close. It's $899,000 in our budget for this year. What do you think of that number?
I think it's very high. And I think we could easily knock $250,000 off of it just by getting accurate statistics and reevaluating everything from there.
What do you mean? How would you knock off $250,000 by getting accurate statistics?
Because, like I said, everything stems from those police statistics. So, the amount of officers, the amount of equipment, like, for example, we had Chief Kelly who did not live in Yardley Borough. In fact, he didn't even live in Pennsylvania. He lived in northern New Jersey, in Steubersville, over 50 miles away. We paid for his police car.
What does that have to do with the statistics?
Well, because it was the budget, I mean, the cost of the gas doubled.
But I'm curious about your statistics point. What does his gas have to do with $250,000 in statistics? Which, by the way, his gas was not $250,000. So, what are the, if you're, I, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're claiming that we're inflating our calls statistics. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
So, how do you, by accurately reflecting, allegedly, if we are inflating, if we accurately reflected our call statistics, how would that find us $250,000?
Because everything stems from that. You don't have as many full-time officers. You don't have as many part-time officers. Everything, we have the same population that we had 10 years ago, but the budget has doubled. And the only, and, and those statistics have doubled, more than doubled. They've tripled.
So, you think if we had less, we pared down our calls for statistics, or we're allegedly inflating them, we could get rid of existing officers and that's how we would save money? That's your opinion?
My opinion is, you have to start with a realistic number. And you said in your, you know, emails, that you reviewed the statistics under Chief O'Neill versus Chief Kelly, and that everything was so much better under Chief Kelly because they doubled. But the budget also doubled. And that's not the part you're looking at. When you increase those numbers, the budget, first of all, just having a chief that patrols, that's one thing that will save us money. That's, that's considerable. That allows us to not have another...
Full-time officer.
It's a theory, but correlation doesn't necessarily mean causation in this case, I think. But something we definitely should look into. So, thank you. Those are all my questions. Serving on this committee will require, I'm, are we not going in order? Yes. Serving on this committee will require collaboration with council members, borough staff, and the police department, including those with whom you have had very public disagreements. How do you plan to set aside personal feelings or biases to work productively and respectfully as part of the group?
Well, that's because I'm a professional and I run a business. And I have worked with students, with police officers at every level. And I know how to work with people. I don't do personal attacks. I don't do hateful emails, 17 pages long. I just work with people.
Right now.
I'm stating a fact that I do not spend my time writing 17-page hate mail. That saves time and it certainly allows more productive things to go on.
Hi. What skills do you have that would make you suitable for this committee?
Well, I have a lot of 25 years' experience consulting with local, state, and federal police. I train them at all levels. So, I come in contact with...
With a group, not...
With the...
With the whole group.
With the committee?
With the committee.
Oh, okay. Well, like I said, I was chair of the philosophy department when I was a tenured professor. I had to deal with a lot of professors. And I've, you know, you have meetings all the time and, and work that way. And I also have a business where I have colleagues and we work together. So, I do have experience doing that.
Have any questions?
I hate being last.
Not last, or is the last?
My apologies. Well, first of all, I'd say, really appreciate you coming in tonight. I've always appreciated your, your skill set and your research abilities. But I must ask in some other way, as a professor myself, and you've been a professor, and I do group projects, what strategies do you recommend to students to improve group dynamics when there is an issue, so that you will be able to navigate this committee without, and not putting it on you, the onus on you, but everyone to cooperate and get consensus. And as I explain to my own students, consensus doesn't necessarily mean you all agree. But you have to get to the end or else you have not fulfilled your responsibility. So, just quickly.
Well, I just, you know, everybody is mature and they work together. And if one person doesn't, you...
I asked for a strategy, though.
A strategy. I would just tell everybody to focus on what their particular area is and that, share it and, and work together. I mean, I don't know what else to say. I don't know what the question really is here.
It's about group dynamics and the strategies that are employed to ensure a smooth relationships and get to a consensus regardless if you completely agree or not. That's what, sort of what I teach. So, I wanted to get...
In the same manner that council's been getting along like that.
Okay, so you've just proved someone else's point, but okay.
I mean, you're asking me to.
It's okay. You can, you can. That's okay.
You know, I feel like I'm getting that question because council is infighting so badly.
I did not have any intention to embarrass or to say that that had anything to do with council. I was simply asking you as a member of that commission, if you were selected or appointed, how you would or what strategies would you use or recommend to your students in a situation like this to get to consensus?
Well, I would just tell everybody to be mature and professional and.
Well, thank you.
You know, that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'd also really appreciate you applying. You have put a lot of time into this already and understanding the police department in Yardley Borough. And so my question is, looking at your resume, which is like five, I think it's like five pages, you have a lot of experience in law enforcement, like 125 law enforcement trainings. I just think you must have an incredible rolodex. My interest here is, like I said earlier with the four, adding four members, it's about, in the end, it's not about having nine people who have the same viewpoint and agree with each other. It's really about nine people who bring in what their knowledge is to the group and as a result, we have some clear takeaways, potential action steps that council can take to improve things. So I'm thinking that you have these incredible contacts. Could you give us examples, you don't need to name, please don't name names, but just like two or three resources that you know of that might be helpful, that you could draw knowledge from? And I just want to say one more thing. The reason I ask that is because I looked at a regional police study and it was amazing. And I was thinking, how are we going to ever get to that level? Because there is so much complexity to how law enforcement works and unless you're really on the inside in that world, it's hard to get a sense of it all. So what are examples of resources that you could bring or call on to, to this committee to improve its outcomes?
Thank you for that question. I have trained probably at least one or two people from every department in Bucks County and also in really Pennsylvania, I've worked with every level of like state, Pennsylvania State Police, other state police, federal police, every, from sheriff's departments to DEA, to Homeland Security. I have, I do have numerous contacts and I am, and I have discussed the, how transition committees work with, with some of those contacts. That's how I found out a lot of different things about different directions this could go in and different ways to look at it. So yes, I do have quite a number of, even chiefs, I've trained chiefs in Bucks County. So I certainly could get input. They're happy, happy to give input on these types of things.
Thank you.
Dr. Perlmutter, if you just want to take 30 seconds, we're a little over on time of where we were hoping to be with each candidate, but if you want to just take 30 seconds to give a closing synopsis of why you think you're a good fit for the committee?
Well, I really do think I have a lot to contribute. I know how to do research. I have, like you said, contacts. I also have lived in Yardley Borough during the tenure of three different chiefs of police, Chief Thomas Kristowitz, James O'Neill, Joseph Kelly, and every one of them had their own individual styles and different leadership styles. And I have institutional memory of those transitions when we went through it. So I do have that knowledge also and I think that'll be helpful.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I think since you've already been interviewed, she could remain in the room, right? If she wants to stay, because we're going to be voting at some point on this.
Okay. Thank you.
I think Paul is getting our next candidate. Sorry, I'm too close to the mic. Paul is getting our next candidate, which is Roxanne Joseph Markey. She should be in in just a minute. One thing I will say just procedurally, if we can all just tighten things up a little bit and ask her questions a little bit faster, we did take about 17 minutes to interview Dr. Perlmutter and we are trying to keep it to 10. So just in the interest of us all getting home, there are, and just, if we do 15 minutes instead of 10, it's about two and a half hours, so. I appeal to everyone sitting here at the table with me, let's ask her questions fast. All right, just a second, let me restart the timer so we know roughly how long we're taking. So Roxanne, thank you for your interest and thank you for applying. I have really two questions that I'm going to ask, there's one question to start things off and then we'll just go down the line and then I'll kind of close things up and let you make a closing statement at the end. So my questions are, how long have you lived in Yardley Borough and what drew you to choose Yardley as the place where you were going to live?
Well, I've been living in Yardley unfriendly since 2024. I'm currently married to Earl Markey. And what drew me to Yardley? I like small town mentality. You can, it's walkable, so for me, that's easy. I love to go to the manicure pedicure. I like the bike trails. We do a lot of bike riding and I love the sense of community, especially like with Music On Main and then of course the Yardley Fest. I did, is it Canalway last year? So things like that is very, because I came from Trinidad and Tobago, which is a very small island, 1.2 million, but this, and it's a small island, but this has a sense of community, family, close knit. And, you know, like everything else, we have our issues, but I do like Yardley. It's very walkable. I even tell my friends, I said, coming from, living in a big township like Cheltenham and then coming to Yardley, it's such a difference. I love it. I can, I tell them, I say, I can walk everywhere, Wawa, Starbucks, you all basically has everything here. And the reason why I signed up for this transition committee, I would like to bring a fresh perspective and also from an, like, not an outsider, but a diverse perspective to the town, a fresh pair of eyes, you know, so things that probably you or me not see or experience. I can, I think I'll be a valuable contribution to this transition committee because of that.
Thank you.
I have two questions. The first would be, in your view, what are the two most important tasks that this transition committee needs to do and what unique qualifications do you bring to the table to help analyze those tasks?
To, I'm basically, one, provide oversight to the community, turn the team and the community and also basically have a sense of community and basically do community outreach to find out whatever issues or resolutions we may have within the community and outer community. And me, being a senior category manager, I, for me, I would see it as a sense of bringing resolution. I do, I engage in resolution all the time because I'm an engineering category manager. So for me, this, my skills as a category manager, bringing resolution, bringing diverse and a different perspective will make me a great candidate for this role.
Okay, good. And second question is, while serving on this committee, how much time per week do you comfortably feel you could devote to a combination of, you know, meetings and doing research and whatever the tasks are assigned to each of the committees? How much time per week do you feel comfortable that you could devote to this?
A week? I can see myself comfortably devote about two hours a day.
Okay, all right.
Doing research, providing ideas.
Thank you.
I have two questions as well. With a tenured police chief departing, there is going to be changes in the department. Perhaps they will be small leadership changes or perhaps there will be bigger changes related to staffing models or budgets. Can you please describe a time when you were part of a committee or organization that had to evaluate or restructure an existing department or service? What was your role and how did you contribute to the decision-making?
So in my role as a category, senior category manager, I'm, I was also on the board of our employee engagement council for Pico at the time. So we had to actually organize and deal with certain transitions within the team where we had someone actually abruptly leave. So we, so then I had to spearhead with the rest of the board. I was actually on the board of Cadera. And, you know, I had to actually spearhead and coordinate how we were going to function without this, without the person who left the board. So basically, I took an agenda where we got together on a weekly basis to divvy up or divide their responsibilities amongst each other and we decided to, based on those roles and responsibilities, we would each take a part of that person's job and move, and of course, be able to move forward with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you know what the operating budget is for the Yardley Borough Police Department?
No, I do not.
So it's just $1,000 under $900,000 a year. So what do you think of that number?
Well, that's fine because as a category manager, my budget limit is over $1 million and I've just recently closed a deal where the budget was actually $45 million and I negotiated them down to $25 million over a five-year period. So I'm used to budgets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Serving on this committee requires working collaboratively with council members, the police department, and borough staff. How will you ensure that you set aside any personal biases or outside influences to participate objectively and contribute constructively to the committee's work?
First of all, as a committee member for Yardley Borough, anything that, any ideas I may have, of course, will be set aside because I will be putting aside my internal bias and external bias and be working with the group or core team of the borough or the committee members to ensure that whatever we do, it's for the community, it's for Yardley Borough and everything that I do, I do set aside personally. Whatever I leave at home at 26 West College Ave stays at West College Ave. When I come to do a job, whether it's at my home at Pico, Exelon, or Yardley Borough, I come to do a job.
Sorry, one second. Her, Mike? Oh, sorry. Continue, please. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. What I'm saying is, when I come to do a job, my personal life stays at the door. I come to do a job to ensure that everyone at Yardley Borough, we meet their agenda, we meet the goals that is set towards the borough and the people in the community.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
What skills do you have that you would bring to the group that would make you suitable?
Negotiation skills. I, as I said, I'm very good at negotiating. I've also been told that with my research, been told that with my SVP. I bring also emotional intelligence where I'll be able to step aside, look at the situation from a logical perspective and not an emotional perspective. And I'll be able to work with each other because at the end of the day, as I said, it's for the goal, it's for the good of Yardley Borough. So not only would I bring my negotiation skills, I would bring my, it's called human or cognitive skills, where emotional intelligence, where I will be able to work with my coworkers and put aside any issues we may have, personality issues and at the end of the day, put it towards the good of the organization and Yardley.
Okay. How would you handle any kind of conflicts or disagreements within the group?
It depends. I mean, we are all human, so we would all bring our own personality. We have our own traits and dynamics and as adults, we'll just have to sit down and talk it through and, you know, learn to put aside certain issues and work towards the good of whatever we, the agenda. Yes.
You're up.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for coming in. I also understand, congratulations on your recent marriage.
Thank you.
And I think that you do bring in a unique perspective and I wanted to touch upon that, but also firstly, as an elected official, my main concern has always been what the community thinks or what their opinion is. What do you propose or what would you propose to gain a better, to gain better insight into the community's opinion of what the final recommendation would be? And if I'm not clear, I can clarify.
Recommendation would be for.
Sorry?
Recommendation would be for.
Or which direct, or at least if not an exact answer, but a ranking of what solutions would work best, how would you approach the, would you approach the community? And if so, what strategy would you use to get their opinions?
Oh, that's easy. You can do a poll. I mean, a public opinion poll. You set out an anonymous link, a questionnaire, a survey, and you ask specific questions of the community of what it is they would like to see. Of course, you'll do a poll first and get specific questions that's tailored to what the issues are. And after that, based on those questions, you set out a poll. It's been anonymous and you get everyone within the community within Yardley Borough to give their opinion. It must be confidential and based on that, you'll get your findings. You'll get your tally.
And very quickly, what is your, I'm sorry, I lost my place here. So I was talking about your unique perspective and experience coming from what would seem like a small island, but we ourselves are even smaller. What would, from that experience of living there, would you bring or could take as a, you know, a use here for this community in this particular commission? You know, is there anything from your previous experience?
Well, no, but I do have family who are law enforcement and they are about community. They're about getting out in the community. They're about walking and getting to know who are, who are the residents in the community. My family, they're all about not only law enforcement, because yes, you have a hard line with law enforcement, but you must also know who your neighbors are, who is in the community so that if there's an issue, you'll be readily available to address those issues.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
Hello?
Did we lose Ory? Ask your question quick, we're at 12 minutes.
You can hear me. Okay. Yes, well, first, thank you for applying. Welcome to Yardley and I'm glad that you find it enjoyable to walk around here. Many of us moved here for that reason. My question to you, I hear general skills which are, which are helpful. I'm also wondering, I heard a little about your family, do you have any specific skills related to or knowledge or experience related to law enforcement in particular that could help the committee?
No, I do not, but that doesn't mean I wouldn't be a great addition to the committee in the sense that I can bring, as I said, a different perspective. I can look at whatever issues or resolutions that Yardley Borough or the committee may like to implement from a fresh pair of eyes. I can actually do my research as someone with no law enforcement experience. I can go outside of Yardley. I can talk to my peers at Exelon, We Are Security. I can look at, talk to colleagues and friends to get their perspectives and based on that, I can make my, I can bring and make recommendations to the committee.
Thank you.
All righty. So, if you could just make a closing statement, like 30 seconds, to kind of summarize why you think you'd be a good fit for the committee?
All I'd say is, I would, I actually enjoy living at Yardley. And I think as someone new to the community, and also with an immigrant background, I would, I would, I think I would be a great addition to this committee. I would bring a fresh pair of eyes. I would also be making my own decisions. I will not be influenced by any external forces or external parties. Anything that I bring would be my perspective, Roxanne Joseph Markey's perspective, and nobody else's. And I would like to, I would like to definitely help develop this team.
All righty. Well, thank you very much. That concludes the interview. You're welcome to stay in the room if you want to. We're going to be voting tonight to appoint to the committee. So, no pressure to stay if you need to leave, but you are welcome to stay now that you've already heard the questions.
Okay, thank you.
So, next up is Mr. David Kennedy, whom Manager Johnson is bringing in.
All right.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for your interest in applying. We're going to try to keep this as, as quick as possible, try to keep it 10, 15 minutes. I have a question I've, I've already asked you when I interviewed for you for the Planning Commission, but just for the sake of everyone hearing your answer, I'll ask you. And it's really two questions into one. And that is, how long have you lived in Yardley Borough? And what drew you to choose Yardley specifically?
Yeah, I've lived here for nine years and been in the area about 30 years, in Lower Makefield and then Washington Crossing and downtown here. I think the reason we came down here really was because of the vibe or the, you know, the atmosphere of a town as opposed to a suburb. The idea that you can walk to Wawa and, you know, walk to Yardley Water Ice, and it's just much more of a quality of life than living in the suburbs. It's obviously not urban. You know, I've lived in the city, and I don't like that. That's too intense.
Yeah, yeah.
But I really found this to be kind of ideal. So, my wife and I moved here as soon as the youngest one went to college.
There you go. Well, that concludes my questions. You're going to get a little more hardball questions from some of my colleagues.
Okay.
All right, I got two questions. The first is, in your view, what are the two most important tasks that this transition committee is going to be faced with? And what are the unique qualifications you bring to help address those tasks? You know, there's a lot of things it's got to do, but what are the two that stand out to you? We've got to make sure we do right.
Yeah, I'll punt on the first one, because it's, I've, I've sat in a couple of the meetings, and it's not clear to me if there's a commission or a charge to this committee. You know, typically, when, when I've undertaken outsourcing or shared service projects, there's a pretty clearly defined goal. Here's the problem we're trying to solve. You know, let's figure out how to solve it. And I have, I don't know, so I don't know the answer to your first question. You know, without really understanding what the problem is and what the objectives are, it's hard for me to answer your first question. In terms of the second question, I've done a lot of outsourcing projects, offshoring projects, shared services projects, all in a business capacity. You know, I run mostly software companies, and we just do a lot of that. You know, we, we try to become as efficient as we can, and we try to improve the quality of the service that we deliver. And very often, you can do that through outsourcing if you do it correctly. So, I've done a lot of it, and, you know, if that can be useful here, I'm happy to, happy to help out.
Okay. Second question is, while serving on this committee, how much time per week do you comfortably think that you can devote to a combination of, you know, meetings, looking at the current police operations, exploring different service delivery models, et cetera? In other words, how much of a time commitment per week do you think is reasonable for you to do?
Yeah, I'm pretty flexible. I'm fortunate to set my own hours with the work I'm doing. I'm working as a CFO for a pharmatech company, but it's, you know, I work when I choose to, so I can comfortably devote as much time as needed. But I would say, you know, I'd probably be comfortable with six, eight, 10 hours a week, something like that. And some understanding what the duration of the, of the project is would be helpful.
Right. Well, we hope to be, get it done by the end of the year, but so, we'll see. Thank you.
Can you describe a time when you were part of a committee or organization that had to evaluate or restructure an existing department or service? What was your role? And how did you contribute to the decision making?
Yeah, quite a few of them. Tried to pick one.
I think your favorite.
Yeah, my favorite.
Most fun.
That would be one that worked.
Correct.
Yeah, that's a good answer. Some of them didn't. Yeah, we outsourced, I'll tell you a couple of them real quickly. We outsourced at my previous company, a software, HR software company. We outsourced our marketing department. And the objective there really was to improve the scale. You know, as, you can very often improve quality or improve scale by outsourcing. Because as a small organization or an organization with finite resources, you can't do everything. You can't have, you know, experts in 10 different fields working for you. But if you outsource it and you find the right partner, you can. And that's what we did. I did like that one. It worked really well for us. I didn't like one. We outsourced software development to a firm, and simultaneously, we tried to offshore it. And it was really just too much to handle. That didn't work well. We ended up increasing costs without really increasing quality or turnaround time or reliability, so that was not good. You know, in all of them, I get, my role is, I was usually in charge. I was usually the executive in charge and did, you know, did a lot of them.
Thank you. Do you know what our police operating budget is?
I don't, no.
So, it's $899,000 a year. What do you think of that number, given the size of our town?
I don't have any scale of reference for it.
Fair enough. Thank you. No other questions? How will you ensure you set aside any personal biases or preconceived notions or outside influences to participate objectively and contribute constructively to the committee's work?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's part and parcel of the job. If, you have to understand what the objective is, which, which I would seek to do. And then you have to evaluate the alternatives and do that without a lot of bias, right? I mean, everybody has opinions, and some of them are heated, and some of them are well-thought-out, and some of them aren't. But if you understand what the objective is, and you can understand what the parameters are that you're able to, you know, to, to use, what levers do you have? What can you change? What can't you change? Then you just do it. I don't have a thought one way or the other about, is this a good idea or a bad idea? I haven't been here long, you know, I haven't sat in enough of these to really form an opinion, so I don't, I won't have too much trouble setting aside my non-opinion.
Hi. How do you handle conflict or disagreements within a group?
Setting aside conflicts with my wife here, right? No, I mean, I think what I've learned is you have to be very, very direct and non-personal. You know, I think where conflict tends to come from is, it'll start with differences of opinions, differences, you know, legitimate differences of opinions, differences of style. But what I've found really is you have to sort of try to disarm people and make sure that they don't feel personally attacked. You know, you can't attack somebody personally. You can't embarrass somebody personally. You know, if you do that, then the conflict becomes deeply embedded in the, in the structure. So, I try to resolve them, you know, really by being straightforward, but not personal.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I really thought that the reason why you moved here was to be my neighbor. That's okay.
Okay.
My question has to do with a few of the comments that you made, and it's regarding your experience of outsourcing. You, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so correct me when I'm wrong, but it seems that you're coming in with a little bit of a, not a bias, but an experience of outsourcing. What is going to be, what, how flexible are you in moving or shifting or pivoting away from that idea if others on that committee are not moving in that direction? What?
Yeah, no, I don't want to give the impression that I'm...
Because that's what I got out of it.
...pivoted to one direction or another. I've, I've had a lot of occasions to evaluate out outsourcing. I've done it. Sometimes I didn't do it. You know, it really depends on what, what you're trying to solve for. So, I think, I still think, I don't, I don't have a bias for or against outsourcing, but I know it works sometimes, and if it's done properly, it works. Sometimes it's a bad idea, you know? Don't outsource customer service. Never works. You know, so, I mean, that's really where I'm going at, Dave. It's, I don't have a thought one way or the other yet.
If you were to pivot in the other direction and maybe consider retaining our police force for some semblance of it?
Yeah.
What do you see as, see as the most significant challenges facing that department today? I don't mean as it is, but today in a general sense.
Yeah, no, that's, again, I don't want to avoid the question, but I don't think I know enough to know what the challenges that our police department has. I've been in the town, you know, I've been in the borough nine years, and I haven't observed any challenge. I haven't observed anything that would make me think that, hey, this could be done a whole lot better.
Well, for instance, our budget, as Madam President mentioned, is almost $900,000. That's a significant amount of money, especially for the amount of people that live in town.
Yeah, is it per capita? Is it, is it more or less than Morrisville or Langley?
I can't speak to Morrisville's budget.
Yeah.
I'm just asking you.
No, I mean, I'm saying, I, 800, what was it, $899,000?
Yeah. As a percentage of our budget, it's far greater than the other towns in our area, but per capita, it's not. It's not.
It's also a significant percentage of our entire budget, so...
Yeah. No, I would say per capita is probably the, you know, the yardstick, right? A percentage of budget, yeah, it should be less, right? The surplus should be 20% of the budget, but it's probably not.
Yes, it should.
Thank you. Your turn, Councilman.
I always have to check. I'm going to assume, Ben, can you hear me? I think you can. So, thank you for applying. And I'm going to assume, I've got, my, my usual question is going to be, do you have any direct law enforcement experience? I'm going to assume the answer is no.
Correct.
I have a better question for you. Okay, great. So, you can write to my other question, which is, as CEO, I've worked with accountants, controllers, and CFOs. And the CFOs, what I appreciate about working with them, when I work with an accountant or a controller, they're just looking at the number. And they're looking, what can get the number lower? And I famously remember one controller telling me to eliminate a number, that that number was driving the majority of what the sales were coming from without making the connection.
Yeah.
Now, that's an extreme example, but I think you get what I'm talking about. A CFO thinks more like an owner. And, you know, you wrote here, and I'm sure you're, I want to give you an opportunity to explain this, because you wrote, "I'm familiar with the dynamics of outsourcing and the inevitable trade-offs among cost savings, quality, and control." So, this is a situation where we have the police. People moved here and lived here because they expect a certain level of local policing and response time. How do you deal with a situation where you could save us, let's say, 20%, 30% off our police budget, but it's at the cost of the quality of policing? Hand it over to you.
Yeah. No, and I, and I think that's a, that's sort of the profound question that the council will have to vote on. I, I won't. But the, there are inevitably, in my experience, and most of my, most of my career was CEO, not CFO. I'm, I'm sort of a M&amp;A guy at heart, and I've done, you know, that kind of work. But there is always a trade-off between control, quality, and, and cost when you look at outsourcing. And some of the things that you just have to understand are that the dynamics of your partner, you know, who you're outsourcing to, are very, very different than, than your dynamics, and their objectives are different than your objectives. And it's really important, if you decide to outsource, that you control for that. You can't outsource to somebody and not understand, how is, how is the measurement going to be? How's the quality going to be measured? How's the quality going to be enforced? And one of the, one of the parts of every project really is understanding the stakeholders. And, you know, in your example, the people who moved to Yardley are tremendously important stakeholders. Maybe they don't want to outsource. That should be something the council considers before it votes. So, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but that, that would be off the top of my head, you know, the answer that I would give.
Thank you.
All righty. So, Mr. Kennedy, I just want to give you the chance, if you want to take 30 seconds, to make a closing statement of why you feel like, to summarize why you feel like you'd be a good fit for the committee.
Yeah, I can do that in probably 18 seconds.
Let's do it.
Yeah, I'm, I've done quite a lot of this. I've thought through a lot of these projects, not on a municipal level, and certainly not law enforcement experience. And I'm happy to help if you all find it helpful. And if not, that's okay too.
Otherwise, you've had a great three hours here with us.
It's always entertaining, Carol.
All right, thanks. Well, I will say you did that in under 18 seconds, so thank you. You, you can stay if you'd like. You're also free to go if you'd like to go home.
Someone wants to be used to words to describe yourself, and my answer is concise.
I'll, I'll have to have you set up a class for me, because I've never been accused of being concise.
I have a quick question for anyone who was on the commission previously. What are the typical hours? Because I, I heard, I think it was Donna asked the question, how many hours can you give to this? So...
Next we have Grammy.
What was that? I didn't hear.
Well, why don't we have the in-person people go, don't you think? Sorry. I just, because they're waiting downstairs, don't you think?
Yeah, oh, I agree.
I'm fine with that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. What was the...
The next will be, the next will be Dan Moan.
Yeah, I, I don't think we know yet.
Well, what has it been? Like in the afternoon? When you have the meetings, are they generally...
We haven't had meetings.
We haven't had meetings.
You haven't had a meeting in the past?
The meetings were shut down until the initial committee.
We had, we had a meeting to pick dates.
Okay.
We had a meeting to review the Zoom drive, and they reached like 30 minutes, maybe 20 minutes, 15 minutes.
I was only asking what time of day, but if you don't know, then I guess...
What time of day was it?
Yes, that's what I was asking.
Evening, yeah.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
After work.
Thank you.
Dan, Dan Moan is next.
Welcome, Mr. Moan. Sorry for the late hour.
It's interesting, because we were talking downstairs about how you were complaining about like the meetings not being over by nine o'clock, and I can't remember a meeting that I ever attended that was a council meeting that went earlier than 10:30.
So, Dan, thank you for, for applying. We appreciate your interest. And I have two questions that I'm going to ask as one question, then I'll, to start things off, and then I'll pass it off to my colleagues, and they'll grow you a little bit harder, but I'm just going to ask a really easy one for you.
Sure.
And that is, how long have you lived in Yardley Borough? And what caused you to move to Yardley?
So, I have lived in Yardley Borough for 25 years. The reason that we moved here is at the time, Cheryl and I had just gotten married, and she was working in Center City, Philadelphia, and I was working in New Jersey. And so, when we were picking out a place, she said, "I must live close to a train station so I can take it into Philadelphia." So, we looked at the map and saw, saw Yardley Borough, and we rented a house on Harper Avenue, which was really close to the train station. So, we stayed there for three or four years, and then Cheryl got pregnant. And about two or three months into her pregnancy, we said, "You know, I think we're adults now. We should probably buy a house instead of renting." So, we tried to buy our house from our landlord, but they, they were going to retire there, so they didn't sell it. But she was a real estate agent, so she said, "I'll help you find a house." And we said, "Well, we're only interested in a house in Yardley Borough within walking distance of the train." And she's like, "Okay, that's like 300 houses, but okay."
I have the exact same story, by the way, and my realtor told me, "Good luck." And I had to bring her the list.
Yeah. And like four... And like four months later, Cheryl was six or seven months pregnant, and she said, "There's this couple that's getting divorced on Long Shore Avenue, and they're asking for it, and if you go there today and make them an offer of list price, they will sell it to you." So that's exactly what we did. So I've been here 25 years, and that's why I moved to Yardley Borough originally.
That's wonderful. Thank you. I'll pass it off to Mr. Carlson.
Okay. In your view, what are the two most important tasks for this committee? And what unique qualifications do you bring to help, you know, analyze those tasks and get recommendations ready for council on?
I mean, the important task is determining whether, you know, what to do with the police department, right? This is an age-old question in Yardley Borough that, you know, this is not new. Do we outsource it? Do we do some kind of regional police? Do we keep it here in the borough? So, I mean, that is the important issue for us as a community. The experience I bring is I was on council for four years during the two floods that we had in '04, '05, or '05, '07, I forget exactly now. And while I was on council, I also did serve on the Public Safety Committee with Chief O'Neill, and was also involved in negotiating a police contract, so I have a really good idea of all the basics, right, of the budgets, of the basics of, you know, what the police force does in our community. And so that experience, I think, will be helpful in looking into this. And, you know, I have a list of like, as I was thinking it through, right, I have a list of like 30 questions of, you know, what are the important things that we should consider, and how do we get that information, you know, together for the ultimate decision-makers, which is council? I would see my role as using that experience to ask the right questions and to get the right information, so that the Borough Council can make the right decision for our community.
Cool. I understand that. While serving on this committee, how much time per week do you comfortably think you could devote to the combination of meetings and pulling up that data, looking at it?
Yep.
And turning it into something useful?
Well, as a former council member, I have a great idea of the amount of time that it takes to do some of these tasks. It probably won't be that intensive, because it's more of a single, a single type of issue that we're looking at here. But I've, my kid is fourth year in college, so Cheryl and I are experiencing the empty nest timeframe, where we have plenty of free time to do stuff, and so I'd be able to put in the required time to do a good job and a thorough job.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two questions. Can you describe a time when you were part of a committee or organization that had to evaluate or restructure an existing department or service? What was your role, and how did you contribute to the decision-making process?
Oof, restructuring. I mean, during the four years I was on council, we didn't restructure the police department, but we made modifications several times. It was a yin and yang that went on a lot, where, you know, and a lot of it's financial, right? We had, when I was on council, we had two full-time police officers, sometimes three. And then one of the police officers would retire, so we would go through a whole process of, hey, you know what? We could save money if we did a part-time officer or filled in with part-time officers, so we would rearrange everything to do that. And then, a couple of years later, someone would go, "Hey, I have a great idea. Let's hire another full-time officer, because it'll be cheaper instead of having all these part-timers." So I've been through a lot of those types of evaluations. I mean, we didn't redo the police department, but, you know, we changed the way that it operated.
Do you know what the operating budget is for our police department?
These days? I know when I was on, it was $550,000. So if I had to guess, I'm going to say it's, and I do have to guess, because I don't know. I'm going to say it's probably closer to 8, 850.
899.
Yeah.
What do you think of that number?
What do I think of that number? I don't have a judgment on the number. What I am interested in knowing is, because cost is a big issue with, you know, this whole thing, it always has been. So what I'm interested in finding out, right, is what does the other side of the scenario look like, right? So we know what it takes us to run it, right? And maybe we can save a few dollars here, a few dollars there, and, you know, you don't need to reorganize the police to do that. But what is really going to be the cost savings to move it to lower Makefield, or to do a regional police force, or something like that? So, you know, I'm not familiar enough with the current police budget to be able to judge that. I mean, but.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
How will you ensure that you set aside any personal biases or outside influences to participate objectively and contribute constructively to the committee's work?
I mean, we all do have biases, for sure. Full disclosure, I was on council when we hired Will, so I know Will very well. I mean, we're not personal friends, but we know each other enough that we have a history together. So the good news is, is that I will not be making the decision, right? So my bias isn't necessarily going to be an issue. What I can tell you is that, based on my experience, I will ask the right questions and get the right information to present to council, so that they can make the decision that they believe is best for the community.
Thank you. Do you handle conflict or disagreements within a group?
I don't shy away from conflicts or disagreements. In my earlier life, I probably was a little too aggressive when those types of things happened, but at 60 years old, I've mellowed out a little bit. And, you know, I'm not going to let somebody walk all over me, but I will make my point and let others make their point, and I don't know that we have to come to a consensus, but at least we have to understand where each other is coming from.
Thank you.
Bye.
Hey.
Heard a lot, and I know a lot about your past experience and being on council. Thank you for your time. I guess I want to pivot to, you know, as elected officials, we want to try to give the community what they want. What do you propose for a better understanding of the community's viewpoint and how to get that?
Yeah, so I, based on my experience on public safety and generally living in the community, I know there's going to be some passionate responses, regardless of what the council decides, just by starting to look at this, right? It's going to bring out people's passion for having a police identity here in Yardley Borough. So I definitely believe that, you know, part of this process is going to have to be, there should be some type of community, I don't want to say polling, but community surveys, to understand, you know, maybe some of the issues as to why people believe, you know, one way or the other, so that, you know, so, for example, let's say that we decided that we were going to outsource the police department, right? So somebody might say, hey, maybe we don't want to do that, because we won't have a police officer in Yardley Borough who we know. Well, maybe you can have a substation with a dedicated Yardley Borough policeman. I mean, these types of ideas just need to be researched and laid out, and we need to understand the cost of it. But we also need to understand what those concerns are from the public and why they have those concerns, because maybe they can be addressed, and maybe they can't be addressed.
Thank you.
Councilman? Horry?
Oh, yeah, Horry.
Yes, thank you. I keep looking for the next person, then I realize it's me, and then when I look at the Zoom, there's two of me, because I'm on both cameras. Anyway, thank you for applying. Thank you for your service to our community. When I first heard your name, you must have been with one of those people you had tensions with. Then I met you, I was like, he's the nicest guy. What's the problem? So it's just, I appreciate you being a level-headed person. I think what strikes me as interesting is your previous experience working with a different chief than we recently had for 10 years, when the department was a lot smaller, because part of what the committee is going to be doing, and what my interest is in selecting people, is to bring in a good diverse bunch of thinking and knowledge, so that smart decisions can be made, because I think there's so much knowledge in law enforcement that a lot of people don't have. So having done the work before in different levels, I'm interested in that part, especially your work on public safety and your work to figure out different models of policing. For example, you mentioned the substation, and I came across that. When I brought it up, nobody had heard about that, so I said, no, that's not possible. But I was amazed to sit here and hear you say that, because I guess you were on a team that did discover that was possible. What I want to know is, specifically for now, is what insights do you have from a time when the police was, you know, two or three full-time people, two or three cars? Now it's double in both those categories. Are prices, you know, are costs have gone up? You could probably say it probably matches inflation. I don't know if that's true. But do you have any insights from that era to this era that you would say, oh, here are ways that you could optimize your existing police to make it more efficient?
Well, so first of all, policing 20 years ago was a little bit different than policing these days, right? There's a lot more precautions that need to be taken, especially for like community events and those types of things. You know, we also, Chief O'Neill did a good amount of walking and bicycling patrols, which reduced the wear and tear on vehicles, so we didn't necessarily have to have, you know, as many vehicles back then. But I know, like, you probably have a little more vehicles now, because, you know, you got to take a little bit more precaution when you're holding public parades, right? Because those tend to be targets now, these days. So I can't speak to, you know, the policing that's going on now. It was absolutely smaller when I was involved. I don't know if that's a good thing, I don't know if that's a bad thing. But I do know that, like, you know, we were always, always looking for ideas on how to be more efficient with our police. Specific ideas? I mean, I have questions as to how different scenarios would work. I don't know that I necessarily have specific recommendations, because I am not in law enforcement, right? So I don't know that I want to say this is a bad thing, or that's a bad thing. Chief Kelly, obviously, is a professional, and so when he asks you for things, right, you have to take the fact that he's a professional, and that's what he believes the borough needs. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. I think you shed some light on it. Thank you very much.
All righty, well, and I'm just going to give you 30 seconds, if you want to just make a closing statement to kind of summarize and bring it home, why you think you'd be a good fit for the committee.
Um, yeah, I, when I first saw that the position, that there was going to be a commission, my first thought was, eh, I'm not going to. That's okay. I'm not going to apply, and Cheryl rolled her eyes at me. And then like a week later, I was just sitting there thinking, I was just writing down questions that I would ask, and I looked at the questions that I was going to ask, and I'm like, will anybody else know to ask these questions? And I don't know whether they will or not, but you know what? I'm going to put my name in, and if you're interested in my questions, you'll include me, and if you're not, you'll include someone else.
So we have to nominate you to get your questions? Is that the deal?
I'll give you the questions, if you would like. They're right here.
There's quite a few there, okay. All right. Thank you so much for your time. You're free to stay if you want, or if you want to go home, there's no judgment. Oh, awesome. Thank you.
Good evening.
Welcome.
All righty. Sorry about that. I'm not going to get your last name right at this time. Can you?
Really not that hard. Wormajenko.
That's what I was going to say! My goodness!
You would have nailed it.
Mr. Wormajenko.
Peter.
Peter, welcome. Thank you. I can't say I'll continue to keep getting it right as the night goes on, but thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate your interest in applying, so kind of have this a work. We're just going to go down the line, and then at the end, we're going to give you a chance to summarize. We are going to try to, if we can, keep it to 10 to 15 minutes. Just a second, let me write down. All righty, so my first question to kick it off, it's a little bit of a softball question, is how long have you lived in Yardley Borough and why Yardley? What caused you to move here?
Gotcha, yeah. So I was born and raised over in Trenton. I've been living in Yardley Borough since late 2021, not long after I retired from the Trenton Police Department over there. Moved into my dad's house on South Bell while I was fixing up my house at 99 North Delaware. Why I chose Yardley? My great uncle, my dad's uncle, built the house at 107 North Delaware back in the early 60s. I was born in '73, so growing up, I would come to his house and visit all the time and go play down on the river, and he had a boat, so he'd take us out. Eventually, he sold that house and moved to 105 right next door, and his daughter lived at 99.
Oh, okay.
She passed away in early 2021, coincidentally, the same year I was retiring, so when she passed away, he offered to sell me the house, and I couldn't pass that up.
That's awesome.
All right, I got two questions for you.
Sure.
In your view, what are the two most important tasks of all the different tasks this police transition committee is going to look at? And what are your qualifica, what do you bring to the party that you can really help analyze and make, come to good recommendations on those tasks?
Sure, yeah. It seems like there's a question on whether or not you should even keep the current police department, the Yardley Borough Police Department.
That's one of them.
So I would imagine the task of the committee is going to be to decide whether or not we should keep our own police department or contract out with, I guess, lower Makefield Township. I don't know if the state police would be an option, but that's the way I see, from the limited information I have, is that council wants to know whether or not we should keep our current police department or contract out with another town. As far as my qualifications, I mentioned, I retired from Trenton Police Department. I was a police officer there for 26 years. Started in 1995, and by 2000, I was promoted to sergeant. 2000 to 2006, I was a sergeant. 2006, I was promoted to lieutenant. During that entire time, I was in patrol, so doing what the Yardley Borough Police Department does every day. I was running a squad of patrol officers. 2011, we had massive layoffs in the Trenton Police Department. We lost 110 cops in one day, right? So I went from supervising 100 cops myself as a lieutenant to being back as a sergeant, supervising eight cops, right? It was a very treacherous time for the Trenton Police Department, for sure. We made it through that. 2014, I was re-promoted to lieutenant. 2019, I was promoted to captain. In that 2014 to 2019 range, I went from all that patrol work to the administrative stuff. I oversaw training, I oversaw fleet management, I oversaw technical services, all that behind-the-scenes kind of stuff. 2019, I was promoted to captain, and moved up to the director's office, where I ended up being her chief of staff. We have a civilian police director over in Trenton. I was chief of staff from 2019 to 2021, when I finally retired. So I more or less ran the department as the highest-ranking officer under the civilian director.
Cool. All right. While serving on this committee, how much time per week do you comfortably think you could devote to a combination of meetings, analyzing what's going on, learning the details of here, and coming up with recommendations for us? How much time?
Understood, understood, yeah. I'm retired, I don't have another job, I'm not married, I don't have any kids, so I have a pretty carefree life right now.
I can check you down for 40?
If you need to devote some time, I can devote some time.
Plus overtime, I think.
I'm actually supposed to be in Atlantic City right now. I put that off for this, so.
Cool. Thank you.
You knew there was a reason why I got dressed up.
No, I'm going home and change before I head down. I'm actually supposed to be in Atlantic City right now. I put that off for this.
Cool. Thank you.
You knew there was a reason why I got dressed up.
No, I'm going home and change before I head down there. This is for all of you.
Well, thank you for saying, through this long process. We appreciate it.
Certainly.
Can you describe a time when you were a part of a committee or organization that had to evaluate or restructure an existing department or service? What was your role? And how did you contribute to the decision-making process? For example, the layoffs that you just described, and if you were a part of figuring out how to plug the gaps with the Trenton Police Department, we would love to hear about that.
That's exactly, exactly correct. As I said, it was lieutenant. At that time, I was what was called a district lieutenant. So I oversaw all of the police activity in one district of the city. When we were notified that we were going to have these layoffs, I was brought in as part of the team to figure out what we're going to do with patrol, where we're going to cut from Criminal Investigation Bureau, how to manage losing 100 cops in a single day. We went from 375 down to 340, down to 199. So I was a member of that team when we were reducing all that manpower.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you know what the operating budget is for the Yardley Borough Police Department?
I don't. I purposely did not look at anything about the police department, because I want to learn here rather than come in with any preconceived notions.
So it's $899,000 a year. What are your thoughts on that number based on the size of our town and the services that we provide?
So I've heard through the grapevine that that's like 80% of the operating budget, which seems to be an inordinate number to me. That seems to be an awful lot. I know Trenton was nowhere near 80%. I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but it certainly wasn't 80%. It sounds like a problem, you know? Spending that much money on one department is significant.
Thank you. How will you ensure that you set aside any personal biases or outside influences to participate objectively and contribute constructively to the committee work? Well, and you started to answer that already, so...
No, actually, I've thought about that before I even decided to apply, because on the one side of me, I have that entire police career behind me, and honestly, a loyalty to law enforcement. But on the other side, I'm a taxpayer, and every time I write the check for taxes, you know, hurts my hand a little bit. So I think I'd be able to bring in a fine balance between the two.
Thank you.
How do you handle conflict or disagreements within a group?
So when I was a lieutenant, one of my sergeants came to me after a very rough night and said, you never lose your cool, do you? And I thought that was one of the biggest compliments. I try to keep my cool, and no matter how chaotic the situation might be, I try to figure out a solution to that chaos.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Great. So I really appreciate your time and experience with the Trenton Police Department. It's a positive, you know, attribute that you could bring to the committee.
Thank you.
It also sounds like you've had well-rounded experience, from everything from officer through, you know, going up the rank.
Certainly.
But now you're not on the force. Why do you want to do this? No, no, I'm just kidding. No, you're not on the force now. So, and I heard you say you're going to think about this, or at least I thought you said you were going to think about this more as a resident in some ways, while bringing all your experience. So how, I guess what I'm interested in is, what do you think, how difficult will it be to come to a consensus on something as important to this town? And how, what would you do to be better informed about what other residents may believe? Whether they may be right or wrong, I don't know.
Certainly, certainly. That is a great question, because it actually brings up some thoughts that I had about this whole committee. I was curious if the council has any preconceived thoughts on what they want the outcome to be. And has anybody asked the residents, you know, was there any surveys done, anything like that prior to establishing the committee? So your questions are the same questions I have, honestly. How can I come in with, you know, making a decision one way or the other? That's just one of the things I've done my whole career, you know? I'm presented with options, and I make the best decision based on the information that I have in front of me.
But my specific question was, is there a way or approach that you can get the residents' feedback?
I think it's very important to get the residents' feedback. And I think with about 2,600 residents in Yardley Borough, it wouldn't be difficult to do a survey of some type, whether it be through mail, which would cost some money, or through email. I know in recent months, I've gotten some emails requesting updated email so that the borough has everyone's contact information. You know, that can be done through a simple Google document to get an idea of what the residents would like.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Tom's been finer. You there? Yes. So thank you for applying. And I am very impressed by your background in policing.
Thank you.
And my question actually stems from that, which is, it's like the most different I can think of when I compare Trenton to Yardley.
Yeah, for sure.
And so, yeah, so, and, you know, so your experience with police works and the lingo and interconnections between departments in different areas, that's, I'm sure, off the charts. What are some things that are profoundly different, in your view, in a small-town, local police station, a few full-time officers, you know? Could you point out some differences that you already know of, that, you know, that show us that you understand that difference?
Certainly. Two come to mind right away. One is, in Trenton, we had a lot of different units in that department. In Yardley, I assume you have patrol only, right? So there was so many different avenues you could take in the Trenton Police Department, other than just being a patrol officer. Not putting that down at all. As I said, I did most of my career as in patrol. But, you know, we're talking about one tiny unit compared to, we had eight different divisions in the Trenton Police Department. So just the fact that you concentrate primarily on one job, kind of allows the department to focus all of its energy on patrol, which is the most important part of a police department. Secondly, because they can do that, because it's a smaller town, because it's one square mile, the interaction and the knowledge of the officers and the community should be better than in Trenton. In Trenton, you know, we would, I would, as a patrol officer in Trenton in the 90s, I would easily handle 30 assignments a day. That's calls for service from the radio room. There's no way I can get to know the residents, even if I'm only patrolling a small area. I don't think you have that kind of call for service here in Yardley. So that should give the officers and the residents more time to interact with each other and get to know each other on a little more personal level than just going job to job to job like we did in Trenton.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All righty. Well, if you could just summarize in 30 seconds why you think you'd be a good fit for the committee, I'd like to give you an opportunity if you do that.
Certainly, yeah. I think it comes down to my balance between my knowledge of law enforcement and my desire to keep my taxes on the lower end. Really comes down to those two things for me.
Gotcha. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. You're welcome to stay if you'd like. We're also not going to judge you if you want to leave and find out the results later.
Actually, I was supposed to be in Atlantic City.
You were supposed to be in Atlantic City, so you're...
If you don't mind.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Thank you all.
You should hear from us tomorrow, because we are voting tonight. So thank you so much. And safe travels.
Thank you.
See you later.
I believe the next interviewee is Shirley Corsi.
Yeah, and for those who are confused, Jeffrey Shaters was the one who withdrew.
Go on.
Oh.
Hot seat down there?
Where are we at?
It's cold in here. There's no hot seat.
It's too cold.
Do I have to sit here?
Yep.
Sure, yes.
You're familiar with here.
Yes, yes, right now.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. We appreciate your interest. Is it third-generation resident of Yardley Borough?
Yeah.
So my, I'm going to kick things off with a softball question, which, in light of that information, is going to seem a little silly, but for the people that might not know you, is, well, there's two questions together. I'm just going to ask the first one, because the second one's going to be really funny. But that's, how long have you lived in Yardley Borough?
How long have I lived?
How long have you lived in Yardley Borough? I know the answer.
Yeah, well, do I really have to say it? And it's like, given my birthday...
Your entire life. So we'll just say a very long time.
A very long time.
And I was, my second...
Over 50 years.
We'll say 40 years. There we go. So my second question, and these are the questions I'm asking all of the people we're interviewing, and I'm not going to require an answer for this either, because my second is, what caused you to move to Yardley? But I think it was just you were born, you were born into this.
Well, my grandmother, actually, my grandmother was here with her first husband. So my mom, aunts, all raised here. And then when my mom got married, they lived with grandmom. We lived with grandmom for a while. I was a baby. And then they brought the current house that I own now.
So let me, let me ask you this. I think this will be a better question, and then I'll pass it off to Dawn, is what's caused you to stay in Yardley all these years?
Well, it's not unbroken, you know? I left, you know, after Pensbury High School.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
College in South Jersey, first marriage. And so now I'm back as an adult, coming back.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But my family's always been here.
Gotcha.
And I ended up coming back and owning my family home.
Gotcha. I appreciate that. Here, I thought you'd always lived here your whole life.
No, no, it was a little break in between.
As there's anything wrong with that one way or the other, but no judgment there. I'm from nowhere, so you've got me beat no matter what. Mr. Corsi?
I have two questions. First is, in your view, what are the two most important tasks? And you've heard a lot about what this transition committee is, needs to do. But inside of that, what are two tasks that you think are the most important ones that the committee needs to grapple with? And what are your unique qualifications that you can help the committee get to a good answer on, recommendation on those tasks?
Okay. I'm sure it's probably a lot having to do with the cost. I don't know all the reason why, even this issue about, you know, the transition of possibly, you know, outsourcing or being part of Lower Makefield Township. But I would imagine cost has something to do with it. And what was your second question?
My second question was, what qualifications do you bring to help analyze that?
Okay. Well, I'm very interested, because now, as a resident and a nonprofit owner, so I'm interested in the business side of things. And community relations are very important. I think it's very important that our community is aligned with our police force. And so I think what I bring to it, number one, because I am very rooted generationally in this town, and I have an interest in my civic duty, just like, I feel what I bring to it is my experience the last three years in growing Gather Place. And really, because I'm now running Gather Place, I'm more involved with my community on another level, I want to get even more involved. And my experience the last few years, I think I can bring that to the table. I do a lot of networking. I think that's been the key to my success so far. Still a lot of growing to do. And I, I'm very much a people person. I get along very well with people. And I think that's important, to have someone that listens to all perspectives. And I think I bring that to the table.
Cool. My second question is, while serving on this committee, how much time per week do you comfortably think you could devote to a combination, you know, of meetings, analyzing data, coming up with recommendations? You know, how much, how much time commitment to this task? Because you've got a lot on your plate. Do you think you could, you're willing to?
Yeah. And because I don't know all of the tasks that are required, I can't fully answer that question. But just generally, thinking of the time, because anything I do, if I make a commitment, I make that commitment. And I believe in, if you, I wouldn't have applied for this if I didn't think I would at least be able to devote the time. So it's hard to answer, because I don't know the time required. But I know that I could give at least, on a weekly basis, maybe one or two evenings a week, if that's required. But because I don't know what the required time is, it's hard for me to say five hours a week, or three hours a week. But whatever time is required, I would definitely want to make sure I allot at that time. But I would roughly say one or two evenings a week, if that's the requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Or during the day, because I, my hours are flexible.
Thank you. Have you ever been part of a committee or organization that had to evaluate themselves or restructure themselves, such as an existing department or a service that was being offered? And what was your role in that reorganization?
The only thing I would say, not like an entity, a governmental entity, but corporate-wise, you know, I've come from corporate America, even before I started running a community nonprofit. So I've been part of restructuring a team of, you know, colleagues, or, you know, departments that had to, you know, maybe downsize or join another department, but not on a governmental level, more on like a corporate business level.
Sure, thank you. Do you know what our current police budget is?
No.
It's $899,000 a year. What do you think about that number, given our town and the services offered?
I don't know, because I don't know how, I don't know if you told me, okay, compared to Lower Makefield Township, or compared to Newtown, it's hard for me to answer that, because I don't have any comparison.
Perfect answer. Thank you. How will you ensure that you set aside any personal biases or outside influences to participate objectively and contribute constructively to the committee work?
I would say, I think that's one of my assets, you know, trying to go into something with an open mind. I pride myself in that. Before, in the business world, and now in the business world, but in the nonprofit, community business world, I think the key to success is to go into things, you know, with an open perspective, not making up your mind before you know the whole story. I think that's very important. That's kind of how I operate. I like to hear all perspectives before I make up my mind, before I go into any situation. I want to hear the whole story. I want to be a part of the facts. Being, my background is computer science, believe it or not. Yes, I do dress up, and I do reenact it now. But my background is kind of data-driven from my corporate world. And also, I don't know, teamwork, that was a big part of my background, being a part of a team. And if you don't have a team, I don't care what you're doing. If you don't have open communication and a good team, it's not going to work.
Thank you.
Or it could work, but might not work well.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Corsi. Hi.
How do you handle conflict or disagreements within a group?
Overall, and I think it's transferable skills from my corporate world that I've used now in the nonprofit world. Conflict resolution is very important, and that's a skill set that you need to have no matter what you're doing. And I do believe I handle conflict pretty good. Um, conflict res- resolution is very important, and that's a skillset that you need to have no matter what you're doing. And I, I do believe I handle conflict pretty good. Um, you know, I, I, sometimes, I, we all have bad days and I might have a short fuse. But, um, I'm, I'm fairly patient, I'm very, um, tolerant, I like to hear, um, everybody's viewpoint. And then I'm not afraid to give my viewpoint once I hear everyone. And I also feel like it's not good to carry grudges and I feel open communication is the key. Um, that for me is the best way I handle, open communication, both ways.
Thank you.
You're up.
Oh, well, you don't know me, right?
Who are you?
Exactly, okay, I'm just kidding. Um, I respect you quite a bit. Um, I, you know, I obviously know a lot about your background and the types of skills that you could bring to this committee. And considering those skills and the fact that you work well with the public, what is your, um, not recommendation so much, but, you know, but you can give a recommendation of, you know, how do you see gaining information about what the community actually wants? And not, you know, at some point, of course, you have to make a, get a consensus, but, you know, you do have to not only consider the financial ramifications, but also, you know, what is the community willing to sacrifice if they wanted to go one way or the other, so?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because everything that everybody talked about, financial and conflict resolution, to me, community has to be right there. Um, will weigh in all decisions, uh, especially when it comes to our police force. And I think that's one of the main reasons why I wanted to at least know about this opportunity to, to be a part of my community in this way. Because our police force, our community, is very important, and we need to know how our community feels about things. Um, and I, for me, I think that's where I can add to it because I've been listening to the community, like many of you all, uh, in different aspects of our lives. And I think we all wouldn't be here if we didn't care about our community. I think Yardley Borough is very special. And, um, I wouldn't wanna lose that specialness that I believe this community has. Of course, there's all, you know, whatever the financial decisions have to ma- be made, considered also. But I think community and how our neighbors feel about things has to be a big part of whatever decisions are made. And I'm a community person, so.
Thank you. Councilman, you there?
You're on mute.
I think he, I think he muted himself.
He's got, he muted, he's muted himself. I did mute myself.
Oh, sorry.
Now you can hear me?
Been trying to do that for years now.
Okay, well, thank you for applying, uh, and thank you for all that you've done, uh, for our little borough. Um, you know, I think the obvious, uh, strengths you bring here are as a multi-generational resident and somebody who started a museum slash cultural center in our little borough that brings people here and engages with the community, um, you're truly invested and it's so appreciated. So I'm looking at this thinking, okay, well, that alone is, is great. What else could we put together as we assemble a team here? And one thing that made me think about your situation, what you could bring to the table, so, and to ask you about it, is that this cultural center museum that you created, um, you did it with like grants and you went through a pretty complex system to navigate. I know how hard it is to get grants. We are completely grant dependent, so we understand that. You created something completely out of that. And, um, so you must have skills in that area. And one of the things that's gonna be on the table for this committee to look at is ways to find, uh, let's say, one of the recommendations has is to retain the police but make it more efficient. Is that an area that you could apply the same work you did for the museum towards policing? Do you think, would you be interested in that? Is that something you think that would apply to finding ways to either raise money through grants or other mechanisms to improve our costs? So that it's easier to retain the local police that we love?
Yeah, I think, uh, and I'm still growing in this whole, um, running of, you know, a community-based organization. I think my biggest success is networking, uh, just really being a part of, of the culture of Yardley Borough. But also networking, learning what others are doing around us. Uh, so I would kinda bring that if I was on, asked to be on the committee, one part of the committee. I would bring that, uh, what I think is my success so far with Gather Place, networking. A lot of people look at me like, well, how are you doing this? How you, I would just say networking, like, for example, in my area, I start networking with the larger museums like Pensbury Manor. And actually hands-on, learning from those that have been doing this longer than myself. So I would, I guess, apply that the same way with whatever's needed or whatever the team is working on with policing. What are our surrounding towns, maybe towns the size of Yardley Borough? What are they doing? What worked, what didn't work? I think I can bring that aspect to it, networking and listening to others that may have gone through this or thinking, uh, the same thing that Yardley Borough is thinking about doing. So I could bring that aspect to it, networking and listening to others.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so, um, Shirley, in thirty seconds or less roughly, if you wanna summarize, make a closing statement of why you think you'd be a good fit for the committee?
Well, I, I, there's still a lot I would have to learn about the committee because I haven't served on this type of committee before. I'm interested, um, and even if I'm not selected, um, I wish everyone well who is selected. Um, but I think it's very important, whoever is selected, um, it, I think they need to know how, I feel this is very important. And, you know, I'll close with a term that it's a, you know, old African proverb, it takes a village. And I think applying that same thought and thinking to something like this is very appropriate, it takes a village. And if asked, I wouldn't mind being part of this village.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That, we're glad that you're a part of our village. You're welcome to stay and be a part, or if you wanna go home, there's no judgment, you'll find out tomorrow. It is very late at this point.
Well, there's only a couple more people, so I'm a little curious, I'll probably stay a little longer.
If you wanna stick around, I'm, I'm normally a night owl, but I'm getting tired, so.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Hello.
Welcome.
Alrighty. Welcome, Rich, thanks for, uh, taking the time to apply, we really appreciate it. And how this is gonna work, we're just gonna kinda go down the line, we'll end with Ori, give you a chance to make a closing statement at the end, and then you're welcome to stay if you want, or if you wanna get home, no judgment there either. Um, my question to kick things off, a little bit of a softball, but I like to have that as an icebreaker, is, it's two questions that I'll ask as one, is how long have you lived in Yardley Borough? And what made you choose Yardley initially when you moved here?
Um, I've lived in Yardley for twenty-eight years, and I moved here, uh, cause I was a bachelor, I was looking for something cheap and preferably something near the towpath because I was running every night.
Nice.
And I loved it and I stayed.
Yeah, alright, Mr. Carlson.
Alright, I got two questions. Um, in your view, what are the two most important, I'll call them subtasks, you know, of the Police Transition Committee? And what unique qualifications do you bring to help analyze those tasks, you know?
Well, I think the Police Transition Committee should be looking at all options, looking at the, the costs and the benefit of each option. And I think, um, what I bring is I've, uh, served on council for three terms. I'm familiar with the police operations, I've negotiated police contracts. Um, I'm familiar with how other boroughs in Bucks County do their police operations, how they fund those operations. Um, you know, I, I think I bring a lot to it.
Cool. Um, second question, I know you're a busy man. While serving on this committee, honestly, how much time per week do you comfortably think you can devote to the combination, you know, of meetings, analyzing, talking to other communities, et cetera, figure out the right models? Um, what's the time commitment that you think you're, you can provide this committee?
Whatever's needed. Um, I know these things, um, I, you know, the workloads adjust based on deadlines, based on what you find, based on what everybody's strong in. Um, if there's one area I can help, um, you know, I'll pursue it all night, you know, I'm just that kinda person. I do have some free time now because we just finished assigning spaces for Harvest Day, so.
[laughing]
I was a pain in the ass this year because of the new location, but, um, yeah, I just, we just wrapped that up.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Can you tell us about a time you were part of a reorganization or a restructuring of, um, services provided at your, your day job or while you were in council? And what was your role and, um, what decisions did you make?
Um, my company, we do reorganizations pretty much every six months, so I'm used to it. Um, sometimes it makes sense, sometimes it doesn't, but you're always looking, as a leader, you're looking for the valid, uh, reasons for change to sell to your, your team. Um, I've often had to sell reorganizations I don't agree with to my team, um, that I think is part of being a leader. Um, I've also, um, uh, served on some arts organizations where we've, um, revamped a lot of things, a lot of, uh, old practices. Um, um, you know, change can be hard sometimes when things have been done in an older organization. Um, and sometimes, uh, you, you have to do incremental change sometimes.
Thank you. Do you know what the current operating budget is for Yardley Borough's Police Department?
It's about nine hundred thousand dollars it was budgeted.
Wrong.
So far, eight ninety-nine.
Yeah, and, um,
It's up by a dollar.
And real estate, real estate revenue is about a million, give or take, and it went up about thirteen percent in two years, so.
Correct.
I think the committee really needs to take these factors into consideration.
So what are your thoughts on those numbers?
Um, they're important. [laughing] You know, like I said, there's a cost and there's a service part of this. Um, you have to weigh them. Um, the last, I served on the previous Police Transition Committee, uh, it was a slam dunk at the time, um, the decision because Lower Makefield did not make it very, uh, easy for us. Um, they didn't offer us service guarantees and certainly cost guarantees we didn't have. So I hope it would be a little bit better this time where we could have more information and make a better decision.
Thank you. How will you ensure that you set aside any personal biases or outside influences to participate objectively and contribute constructively with, or to the committee's work?
Um, I think that's a core responsibility of everybody on this committee is to have an open mind and consider all the factors, right? Um, I think that's just part of being on a, a board, you know?
Thank you.
How do you handle conflict and disagreements within a group?
Um, by listening, um, by really listening and going at the core of what the other people are concerned about. Um, sometimes just finding common ground, sometimes it's going back to your core mission, um, sometimes it's just reframing, uh, a decision. There's various ways you can do it.
Thank you.
I do it a lot.
Hi. So I know you very well. We work side by side on many projects. So, I really know where you stand with everything that I, you know, comfortable with, with a person like yourself. But what I wanna know, and, and I heard you speak to, you know, the cost is a major thing and, you know, maybe we could pivot from our own police, maybe to a merge of another police force, and you mentioned LMT, but you're an idea guy too, and you do listen. So are there any other ideas outside of just those two options?
Oh, there certainly are. I mean, if you look at the, what is it, thirty-one boroughs in Bucks County, there's all kinds of wa- uh, options for.
Couple, or one example even.
Um, well, you can have a regional, you can have a partial outsourcing, um, you can have the state police do part of your operations.
So you, so you're not gonna be one or two dimensional, you're gonna actually would consider and be flexible enough to hear those ideas and, you know, comment on them as necessary, so.
Yeah.
I don't have it. But thank you. Councilman Ori?
So, uh, David stole my question, but that's good because I get to ask you a different question, so it's positive in that. First, thank you for your years of service and the pleasure of serving with you. And I know for sure that you leave no stone unturned when you dig deep. And I, I appreciate your style when it comes to anything we do. So, um, my question for you, I'm gonna dig a little deeper into the last question, because I do think there's a lot of talk of either you save X amount of money and outsource everything to Lower Makefield, but you just become part of their mix. Or you don't do anything and you keep what you have and then you stay like that. And probably in the future, either now or at some point, we're gonna be somewhere in between those two, in some other capacity, maybe. Um, and I'd like to understand more about what those viable options look like. For example, what I learned about was that you could do a substation in Yardley and then a bunch of different police departments could bid on it and like retain our staff. And is that something you're familiar with, or, um, are there other structures that you think would be truly viable for Yardley that would be worth exploring in the committee?
I think all options would be worth exploring, and I think if, uh, if you're a member of this committee, you have a duty to explore all options. But obviously you need a good reason to shift on what is working, so, you know. In- inherent bias is on the level of service that we have now, right? And, but you gotta look at everything, right? What's the law on the maximum millage we can do in this town? What's, what, you know, what's, um, you know, what's real estate tax looking like trends for the next few years? Right, is, is, uh, if we stay with the current police, is it gonna keep growing at a thirteen percent rate? You know, that's not sustainable, so we have to look at all options.
Great, thank you very much.
Alrighty, Rich, if you wanna take it thirty seconds to summarize why you feel like you'd be a good fit, go for it.
Um, I've looked at, uh, the boroughs in Bucks County very carefully and how Yardley, uh, relates to them. And, um, I'm really interested in where we go with, uh, the police coverage and, you know, hopefully keeping the level of service that we have.
Alrighty, well, thank you for your time. You're welcome to stay or go, totally up to you.
No, it's past my bedtime. I'm going to bed.
Totally understand.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I think it's passed all of our bedtimes. Um, next up and our last in-person is Matt Senberg.
I'm a night owl, but.
I started to blur.
When I get a little bit.
Be back.
It's so stationary. Yeah, I move around.
I would be better off if I hadn't, uh, not had time to get dinner this evening. I would be better off if I hadn't, uh, not had time to get dinner this evening.
Exactly. I've developed several plots.
My entire background has been up this long.
That I what?
That you have not been up this long.
And no breaks.
Because I'm a early riser and I know.
My Thursday, this is a three-hour class.
That's fair.
Yeah, you can't go three hours.
Welcome. Yes.
I'm, I'm sometimes still up. When do you get out?
Four forty-five.
Yeah. On a regular basis.
Hello. Thank you for hanging in there.
All righty. Welcome, Matt. We're glad that you took the time. Thank you for, um, delaying your trip, um, out of town to be here tonight.
A big issue.
So we're gonna, we're gonna go down the line with our questions, and then at the end, we're gonna give you a chance to summarize kind of why you feel like you'd be a good fit. So I will kick things off first with a pretty softball question, and then we'll move on to my colleagues to ask you a little bit harder questions. So mine is, um, how long have you lived in Yardley Borough and what initially caused you to move here?
Uh, I've been here forty-five years and, um, I, uh, fell in love with the town as soon as I saw it. I had an opportunity to, uh, open a business here and, uh, I came and looked at it and it just fit. And, uh, in a couple of days, I, uh, made the decision and moved here.
There you go. All righty, Mr. Carlson.
I got, I got two questions, Matt. In your view, what are the two most important tasks ahead for this police transition committee? And what do you bring to the table to, to help them get to a point where they're going to make a recommendation to us?
Well, this is like deja vu all over again because twenty years ago, I was on this very same committee.
Uh-huh.
Doing the very same thing. And, um, so I've had, um, that experience and also, uh, I worked very closely with Chief O'Neil for eight years, uh, with the police department. You know, I was retired then, so I, uh, I probably met with him every day, just about. And we discussed everything about running the police department, the size of the department, how to keep the budget under control, things like that. And, um, and also I've had, uh, forty-five years on the planning commission. So I've had, uh, bring the, uh, getting a little late, but the, uh, relationship with Lower Makefield is very much on my mind and it's, uh, a big part of what I think, why I applied for this.
Okay. My second question i- is while serving on this committee, how much time per week do you think you can actually spend to devote to the combination of meetings and analyzing and helping figure out the right delivery model? How much time?
I have an unlimited amount of time really, uh, at this point, but I don't, you know, I don't think it's going to retake that much time, frankly.
Okay.
If the issues are out there, I think it's going to be pretty obvious.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, can you describe a time when you were part of a committee or organization that had to evaluate or restructure, um, an existing department or service? What was your role and, um, what did you contribute to the process?
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't really hear you and I didn't.
Sorry. Um, were you ever part of a restructuring of a, uh, organization, a department, a team, a service, and what role did you play in that?
I don't think I ever really got involved with restructuring an organization.
Thank you. Um, do you know what the current operating budget is for our police department?
I understand that it's eighty percent of the borough's budget. If I, I don't know if that's correct or not, but.
Eight hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. What do you think of that number based on the size of our town?
Oh, I think.
Any context for whether.
Well, is, is it eighty percent of our budget? No.
I mean, it really depends on how you calculate.
All right, well, it's, it's, it's way too big. Like, you know, I, I had a lot of respect for Chief Kelly, and I think he did a good job, but he priced this out of, priced the police department out of the, out of the business. It's just too big. We, you know, we're really Mayberry here in a way, and we don't need all those police cars, all those full-time policemen. We did very well with part-time. We had, uh, two full-time officers and a chief and a bunch of part-timers. We didn't get involved with the union and we were able to, uh, move people on that we didn't want. And rightfully so. And you can't do that when you're in the union now. It's, you're stuck, uh, with these, with somebody who may be not performing the way you want. And I read about some of these guys that were here in the newspapers, and there was one in there a few weeks ago, one of our off, ex-officers, uh, got himself in trouble. And then there was another one in Morrisville not too long ago, got himself in trouble. And I'm glad we got rid of them, you know? But if we, uh, had them as permanent people, they'd probably, we'd be the ones that were in trouble, not Lower, not Morrisville, not Middletown, you know? Um, so we had a lot of, uh, part-time officers, but it was good in a way. We trained them, uh, and they went out to other departments, like Officer Ponorelli was here tonight. He was a, one of our officers and he went to Lower Makefield. And, uh, we had him go everywhere. I saw Chief, uh, uh, Porter, Arnie Porter was here tonight from Bristol. We had, uh, officers everywhere and it brought our Yardley's name and reputation across the county really. And, um, so we have good relationships with all the other departments, and if we ever needed help, and we did, uh, we would call in other officers from other towns. We used to do, um, truck inspections here. We made a lot of money doing that too, but, uh, and Officer Ponorelli was the one. But then when he moved on, we were able to borrow other inspectors from Bristol and Morrisville, no problem at all. We didn't even have to pay for it. And, uh, you know, Chief O'Neil was, uh, president of the Bucks County Chiefs Association for many years. And, uh, so he networked throughout the county and, uh, we had a stellar reputation. And, and the men that came out of here that moved on had no trouble getting jobs. And, uh, so it wasn't really an, an issue having a lot of part-timers. We had a little trouble with scheduling sometimes, but really we covered it. And, uh, whenever we needed extra help, uh, Makefield came through, you know? Kalusi, uh, and, and O'Neil had a good relationship and, uh, they always backed us up, and we backed them up many times too. And, and I'm sure the same thing would happen with Kelly. But the real issue is Kelly is not the last word. And we've had, and I don't know how to say this tactfully, so I won't, but we're like the poor stepchild of Lower Makefield, and they've treated us like that for the forty-five years I've been here. And I can enumerate countless issues where we got to short under the stick from them. And I don't trust them. And we might get a good deal from them now, but when Kelly moves on, who knows what we're going to have? We'll have a deal like, uh, who had the golf course up here, Guzekowskis? They ended up having to sue Lower Makefield because they screwed them. And they tried to sue us. They sued us for two million dollars a couple of years back when the, when their lake overflowed and washed out the bridge and killed that man, uh, and they wanted to put a big fancy bridge in. On our street, uh, half of our street, Oxford Valley Road, they sued us for two million dollars. Cost us a fortune, you know, to get out of that. And, uh, you know, the, the emergency access for Orchard Hill, for example, could have been a very simple thing to have an emergency access on the Pine Lane across a small grass strip there. Well, Lower Makefield wouldn't allow it, just a chained-off thing, you know? And then to make it even more permanent, they took that little piece of land and they deeded it over to the landowners on either side. So it could never be an emergency access. So now the emergency access is probably, I haven't seen it for a few years, comes down on the main street there by, uh, where the funeral home used to be. It's probably impassable. I doubt anything could go up there or down it. So they really don't have an emergency access. Same thing with, uh, the Iron Horse Development back here. We wanted to have an access, uh, out to Oxford Valley Road, which is our road, and they wouldn't allow it. And we did get an emergency one, but, uh, not a permanent one. Same thing with the bank. That's why that toll gate is there because they only wanted one-way traffic. And, you know, they just dictate to us and, uh, I don't think it's right and I don't trust them one bit. They got in trouble with the golf course. They had to rezone the whole up thing up there, and now they're selling off Torbert's Farm to housing. Shady Brook Farm is gone because Lower Makefield needs the money to pay off their bonds for that stupid golf course and, and the lawsuit that ensued after it. And the swimming pool, another thing. We had a good agreement to use the swimming pool. Well, they don't have that anymore. Same thing, they used the golf course. We had a special rate to use that. We don't have that anymore either. And, uh, it, it's just, uh, one thing after another, and the governments will change and you might have a pretty good deal now, but it won't be, I guarantee you, in a few years, we won't save enough money. You might save a hundred dollars, you know, but you're not going to save a hundred thousand dollars at all.
So Matt Senberg is never moving to Lower Makefield Township is what I got.
No, I would not.
Thank you, sir, for your answer. Michelle?
Oh, um, how do you handle conflict or disagreements within a group?
How do I handle conflicts within a group?
Yeah.
I think we need, it needs to be, the people, the individuals involved need to state their, um, uh, issues and hopefully with a moderator, they can come to an agreement, uh, and a settlement, you know? But I think it takes, uh, a strong leader really to, to do it. Somebody that, uh, has a little more influence over the people that are involved, that can make them see the issues or get them to see the issues more clearly and to see the other side of the issue, both sides. And, uh, that's how, you know, I, you know, I had a business employees and we had agreements for thirty years. We had a business and there were always things coming up, but we were always able to sit down and talk about it and work it out and, and move on without hard feelings and, you know, hurting people's egos.
Thank you. You're on.
Oh, thank you. I love your moxie. And this is where I'm supposed to say, so how do you really feel? No, but I'm just kidding. Well, let me tell you. I know you will. Um, so if all that information that you, um.
The sewer authority is another one. I forgot that one.
Let me stop. Keep going. Uh, I don't even know what I want to ask anymore. I'm so confused. Okay, so I, um, you come with a lot of experience, years and years and years of experience. Um, and you've seen it because you were mayor. So, um, I don't doubt that you bring a great perspective if you were, you know, appointed. But you seem to have, and don't, and I get it, you have definitely an opinion about, uh, the potential of merging with Lower Makefield. But if we could separate that a little bit and just talk about, uh, not just a solution of merging or a solution of keeping the force, but what are other options that you may have thought about?
Well, yeah, I have thought about it and to me, I, I think downsizing, just like many businesses are doing right now, they're downsizing. And people are downsizing their homes and everything, and we need to downsize. It just got too big, too quick, too expensive. And we had the money, we don't have the money now. And it was good when we had the money, but you got to make changes. I would love to have a full-time force. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that if you can afford it, but we can't afford it. It's as simple as that.
My question though was, are, what, can you give me an example of another option?
Well, um, well, downsizing.
I know, I know you talked about part-time.
We could outsource part of it, you know? We could outsource the evening patrols. I don't think you need to though. I think, I think downsizing, going back to the way it was when, or close to the way it was when Chief O'Neil was here, uh, worked good. We didn't have.
Let me just ask a question in regard to that answer that you just gave.
I'm sorry.
I said, let me ask another question in regards to that point you just made. We're talking about, and I'm not judging, but I'm, I'm just going to bring up the question. So you're talking about a time that was, how many years ago?
Twelve.
Twelve years ago. And now, twelve years later, even though I do understand your point of view about, you know, the, um, cost, you know, going up, um, but is that, the idea of using so many part-timers a good solution for today's policing?
Yes.
Could you tell me why?
Well, I, I kind of did earlier about.
I, I just reiterate then.
About our.
Not too long though.
You know, but we don't need five police cars. I mean, that's just crazy to have the insurance and the maintenance on, I mean, how much money is that? Two hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment sitting out there? And it just sits there. And, uh, we pay insurance and maintenance on it. We don't need it. Only two cops are ever on at one time. Now, I understand they want to have blockades for the roads and stuff, but that's too much money for a blockade. There's other ways to do it. There's the fire police, for example. They could possibly block off a street for a parade. We have the volunteers that, uh, Chief Kelly started. They could block off the street for a parade or an event. You know, we don't need to have a car that costs fifty, sixty thousand dollars sit out there all year and get used for two parades.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Uh, well, thank you for applying and for your decades of service to our community. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, and I think what I'm most intrigued by is your deep knowledge of the previous model. Uh, because as you said, you know, we had this other model that was working where Yardley was like the incubator for new part-time people, and it got a reputation as that, and was able to recruit people. Like, and then we have this other model, which brought us some benefits, but may have gone a little too far in another direction, and now we have the opportunity to maybe right-size. Um, and I'm curious if, how you would answer if somebody said to you, well, that worked then, that doesn't work today because X, Y, Z, uh, it's too hard to recruit people, wages are too high, um, things don't work like that anymore, we don't have the reputation. I don't know, I'm just thinking of ideas. Do you think that model or aspects of that model you had would apply to the modern-day era?
Um, to a degree, yeah. I'm sure you, you make a good point, and I, I think it will though because, uh, I don't think things have changed that much. You know, prices have changed and salaries have changed, but there's still the same graduates coming out of the police academy. They're still looking for their jobs. Uh, we still, we haven't grown any. We don't need any more than we ever needed. Our needs have not really changed here. We haven't really grown. We're built out, we're one mile, uh, it's not a huge township where we have, need, uh, a forty or fifty-man police force like Lower Makefield has. And, and I like the, um, you know, the personal touch that a small force has. You know, Chief O'Neil used to ride around town every morning. I used to go with him quite often. We'd go up and down every street, talk to people, pull over, you know, open the window, and he'd walk, walk into the stores and shops and that's what I'd like to see again. You know, we had bike patrols. Cops went around on bicycles. I don't know if they still have them, but they should. I don't know if they still have them, but they should. You know, there's no reason why they couldn't. It creates a good feeling, you know, amongst the residents. And I think the residents really appreciate having their own force. And I think there would be a huge blowback if we lost it. I really do.
I think your ingenuity might be, might come in handy to find ways to make our force something we can retain. So that's what I think you'd have to offer.
Well, we've retained Will for 20 years, and Charlie, too, has been here that long. I hired Charlie, so...
Mr. Sundberg, you want to summarize in 30 seconds why you feel like you'd be...
I think I've said more than I should have already. I'm just glad there's no reporters here.
Oh, reporters, Don.
I think they're watching.
Oh, my mic's not even on. I think there was a reporter here who left, so there we go. Well, thank you so much for your time this evening. You're welcome to stay and see what happens, or if it's past your bedtime, you can go as well. It's past the law.
That occurred a long time ago.
I think Sue's ready to get your...
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You have an executive session. I'll...
Oh, we, we're going to be here till 1:00, probably.
I can say, because I have the donor perspective of sleep challenges, I can watch her on camera. I'm going to sneak out.
Yep.
I'm also fighting sleep challenges right now.
I don't know. I know that they have, well, they held it.
Can we watch Rami?
That was, that was 20 minutes, so... We underestimated, some of them were 10 minutes. The shortest one was 10.5 minutes, Rich Wayne. Actually, this will be the shortest one. This will be the shortest one.
Yeah, we did very well.
The very first...
Go ahead. Let's press play.
Good, how are you? Nice to see you, Paula.
Thank you for taking time out of your vacation for this. And I just wanted to let you know we are recording it so that if council wants to see it, they could see your interview as well.
Sure, of course, no problem.
Okay.
All righty, so I'll, kind of how we'll do the format is I'm going to start things off with my question at first, and then if Michelle has anything, she'll go. And then I'm actually going to be asking three or four questions, because I'm asking questions submitted by other members of council. So you're going to have a lot of questions from me, but they're coming from, I think, four of us total. So, and then this entire interview, we will actually play in the meeting. But it's part of the public meeting, so it won't just be behind the scenes. We'll actually play this Zoom recording. And that way, everything's transparent, and the public can see everybody's interviews. So, so my question is, how long have you lived in Yardley Borough?
I moved to Yardley Borough in 2018, so this is the seventh year, seven years.
I'm 2017, so there you go. And what follow-up question to that is, what, what made you choose Yardley Borough over potentially other areas?
Oh, we, we like the area very much. Historically, we lived in Lower Makefield, so we kind of knew the area. And we liked the idea of being right down in the borough. You know, all the activities and the community. It's, you know, we like being there very much.
Awesome. So likewise. Michelle, do you want to jump in? Do you have any questions?
Not that it really could matter, but I usually just sort of start with, you know, what, what did you do for a living that would, you know, give you skills to, you know, take on a position like this?
Well, as I mentioned in the little write-up for the application, I spent 10 years on active duty in the Army as a military officer. So I'm familiar with the organizational and command issues associated with that. I spent 15 years in a large company. I was at Johnson &amp; Johnson. I ran most of North American clinical research for Johnson &amp; Johnson. And the last 15 years, I spent starting a new company in Lower Makefield, actually, which, which I grew from, you know, two of us to, you know, a couple of hundred. And, and so I have a lot of experience with the financial issues and the people issues and the organizational issues that are associated with private enterprise and not just sort of a government function like I had when I was in the Army. I will tell you freely, I have no personal experience with police matters. And I think I put that into my application as well. So, you know, I do have humility about my understanding of things related to police matters. And of course, I'm open to, you know, learning from others who are more experienced in, in police matters directly. I don't know if it is directly answering your question, Michelle, but...
Yes.
Well, let me just add that I respect the fact that all decision-making around this belongs in the hands of people who were elected by the citizens of the borough. And my understanding is that this committee that is being formed is purely an advisory committee, and I'm very comfortable with that.
Very good. Thank you.
Awesome. So this next question, with a tenured police chief department, there are going to be changes to the department. Perhaps there will be small changes, or perhaps there will be bigger changes related to staffing models or budgets. Describe a time when you were part of a committee or organization that had to evaluate or restructure an existing department or service. What was your role? And did you, how did you contribute to the decision-making process?
Many, many times, I've had to, you know, restructure, evaluate, or create a department. You know, as, as the founder of a whole company, of course, I had to do that on many occasions in many different kinds of department. So, you know, lots and lots of times. The thing that, the thing that I have not done, Jared, is a police force. And I, you know, I understand that, you know, a police function is, is a different function. You know, it's, it's a public service function. It's not a, you know, it's not, and that has a lot of differences from many or most functions in any kind of private organization. So I'm quite comfortable with the issues related to assessing manpower, budgeting, you know, doing an investigation of, you know, mission-critical performance requirements and trying to structure an organization that's efficiently designed to effectively hit those mission-critical requirements. I'm familiar with the issues, which can be complex, around negotiating with multiple stakeholders. Inevitably, there are multiple stakeholders. And again, I'm not assuming that this particular situation is the same as anything I've done before. But in many situations, there are multiple stakeholders who have differing interests that need to be balanced and considered. So I'm familiar with those kinds of things as well.
Wonderful. Let's see here. I'm going back and forth between two different text threads.
Oh, no problem.
In your view, what are the two or three most important tasks for the Police Transition Committee? And what unique qualifications do you bring to help analyze these tasks?
Well, so two or three, I don't, I don't know if I can boil it down to two or three. I guess the number one thing is, sort of above all else, we need to maintain an appropriate level of sort of public safety for the borough. You know, that's sort of the obvious core central mission of the Yardley Borough Police Force. So whatever we do, I think, has to, you know, not degrade the level of public safety and service associated with our police function. Now, how we go about doing that and how we manage that, I think, is the, the challenge. So in terms of the challenges in getting there, there are people challenges, there are budget or money challenges, there are administrative or structural challenges, you know, from, you know, reporting and responsibility lines and, and the incentives and disincentives that are created. There are collaboration challenges. I mean, I'm aware of the fact that Yardley Borough does not operate in a vacuum. We have to have appropriate coordination and collaboration with public safety functions, both police functions and sort of police-adjacent functions, like, you know, fire and other things, you know, ambulance and other sorts of things like that. So I don't know if I've directly given you two or three, but I would sort of order things first by saying, you know, what's the mission and what is mission-critical? And then what are the things that are required in order to sustain and manage that mission going forward? And, you know, and set it up in a way that's, you know, likely to be successful. It can't be too dependent on any one individual. It has to be structurally able to continue on its own administratively if, if any particular person needs to change over.
I think that, I think that's sufficiently answered that question. Thank you for that. Do you happen to know, and if not, I'll give you the number, do you happen to know what the, the operating budget is of our police force and then the total operating budget for Yardley Borough?
I, I do not, no.
So the police budget is 899. And then the total budget for Yardley Borough is about 1.4, 1.5. And the reason why I don't give an exact is because we have a higher number, but we have a lot of pass-through money for things like elevation grants, which technically, that's not really our money if it's just passing through. So a budget of about 1.4, 1.5, 899 if that is police. What are your thoughts on those numbers, just from an objective perspective?
Well, first of all, I'm completely unsurprised. It, it was my understanding already that the police budget was a large fraction of the overall borough budget. So that was my expectation. The absolute numbers, as I said earlier, I wasn't familiar with the absolute numbers. But I think what you've said highlights the critical importance to the borough of the planning we do around the police force. You know, if it's going to represent, you know, a little less than 2/3 of our overall budget, it's going to affect our, our local taxes and our local service levels. So I guess I'd go back to what I said earlier about the importance of not just having appropriate public safety function, but also appropriately managing the budget that we need to allocate. And, you know, I don't know to what extent, and I genuinely mean this, I don't know. I don't know to what extent it might be possible to leverage adjacent community resources in shared ways. The reason I bring that up is because we lived for a time in, in the Princeton area in New Jersey.
Okay.
And during the time that we were there, there was a merger between the Princeton Township and the Princeton Borough. I don't know if that is or isn't a good thing for us. But I think it's an example of the fact that there may be communities nearby that have had experiences that we can learn from that help them to, you know, try to be as efficient and effective as possible in, you know, public service.
Okay, so last question. Well, serving on this committee, how much time per week do you think you could devote to a combination of meetings, current police operation analysis, and exploring potential different service-delivery models? Sorry, that's a bit of a mouthful. How many, how many hours per week can you commit?
Yeah, I, so I, just in May, I sold my company. So I'm no longer, no longer the CEO of that company. So while I'm looking for a new position, my time is comparatively more flexible than it has been in, you know, many, many years. So, so I have flexibility, but it's not, my availability isn't unlimited.
Sure, sure. I don't know that we got, we got you on vacation, so...
Yeah, you did, that's true. My intent would be, if, you know, if I'm entrusted with the responsibility like this, my intent would be to try to do a good job with it, of course. I'm sure anybody that you choose is, is going to be feeling the same way. So, you know, I'm going to try to devote whatever time is necessary to this. You know, I, it's, I hope it's not a full-time job. I do have other, other things, you know.
It's, we're looking at a few hours a week, some weeks zero, some weeks slightly more, you know. People that are going to be on this committee may potentially have nine-to-fives. They may have flexible schedules, you know. Like my schedule today, I work 12 to 11:00 midnight. So hence why we're having a meeting of this at 9:45. So there's certainly flexibility to, to work around multiple people's schedules, so, so yeah.
The kind of commit, the kind of commitment that you're describing, Jared, is I, I have that time available, and I'm willing to commit that time. And, you know, I certainly understand that you have to work around multiple people's schedules, and people have a variety of different types of commitments in their lives. You know, I would hope, and this is maybe a question back at you a little bit.
Sure.
But I hope that at least one of the people that you are evaluating for participation on the advisory committee has some prior experience with policing matters. It's not, you know, it's probably not a necessity, but it would be a nice to have. It really would.
Yeah, there's, yeah, yeah, we're, that's definitely something that we're, that we're looking at. And then there's other people, there are other people in town that have not applied because we, we didn't, we just put this out there and let whoever applied, applied. Like, I personally did not reach out to anybody that I knew would be a good fit and say, hey, you should do this. But we do have people with backgrounds in law enforcement that could, you know, potentially be engaged to get their thoughts on something. And of course, if members of the community, you know, had connections or relationships or whatever it is, like, like, for example, what you mentioned about Princeton. I'm actually familiar with that. That, I'm familiar with it, it happened. Let me put it that way. I'm not familiar with the inner workings of it, like you probably would be as a resident of Princeton. But yeah, so no, those are, thank you very much for your responses and for your time. And we will be voting to appoint on Tuesday. So if you, if you want to watch the meeting live on Tuesday, that's fine. If you want to find out Wednesday morning, that's fine, too.
We can cut it here.
It would have been my next question, is sort of the process would be after this.
We chatted for a few extra minutes, but in the, since it's eight minutes till midnight, I don't think anybody wants to hear that.
Thank you.
We, we might have inadvertently lied. We said we'll be voting to appoint on Tuesday.
Yeah. All right, so...
Okay, so we're going to go down and say our four, and then I'll tally. Are we good with still doing it that way? Is everybody...
Yeah, are we, we're waiting or we're not waiting?
Wait what?
Waiting, like, like, like you had initially suggesting?
I think what we, so my suggestion with how we do it was, we go down, we say our four. This is not a final vote. This is to basically take the big pool and make it a smaller pool. So I'm going to give a tally, and then the four people that get the most votes, we can go through and say, okay, this person, do we have a motion? Second the motion, discussion from council, discussion with the public, you get it.
I would just like to say, in case anybody else hadn't thought of this, because you know how I am, I just sit and think about stuff all the time. The purpose of the committee, the way I had understood it, was to choose people in the community that really probably weren't affiliated with the borough or council. I thought that's sort of how we started this out. So I have a little concerns about optics if all three of the applicants who are, were previously council members and the mayor were all to be chosen, that it might look like we were trying to stack the deck. It's just an optics thing that maybe we're looking for like-minded people. So that's my only comment, that I just thought I'd throw it out there, just to, you know. Not that everybody wasn't great, because everybody was wonderful, but I just look at this like if somebody comes along later and says, oh, look at that, they all picked all the council people that were out there.
It was an excellent pool, though, I have to say.
It was a very good pool, and everybody was fantastic.
I was worried at first we wouldn't have a good pool.
Where we had so many applicants for so few positions that were all so good.
Yeah. Go ahead, Don.
Want me to go first? Okay. G E D N A.
You say their names. Here, I got them. Hang on, wait, I can do that.
Don.
Oh, I see.
Okay, Don.
Rami, who we just heard, Dan Moan, and Peter Merjenko. Those are my four preferences.
All right, Rami Mahmood, Dan Moan, Peter Merjenko, and Rich Wayne.
Can you say this again? Sorry, I thought you were repeating Don for it first. I heard, I heard Rami.
Dan Moan, Peter Merjenko, and Rich Wayne.
Because, Don, I made my own to just make it harder for you. Kim, whenever you're ready.
Oh, sorry. Can we do the latter things?
Sure.
D E G H.
Wait, so Rami.
Yeah, Moan.
Dan. Who are the other two? D E G and H?
Yes, please.
Gee, so Peter? Geez, so Peter Shirley, okay, got it? Michelle?
Uh, David Kennedy.
Okay.
Rami Mahmood.
Okay.
Peter Merjenko and Dan Moan.
Okay. David?
Um, let's get them out of the way. Dan, Rich, Shirley, Peter.
Dan, you getting unanimous support because you stayed? We all feel awkward.
Yeah, we're just trying to reward. We don't wanna embarrass ourselves. You might beat us up.
Uh, Ori, do you wanna go, and then I'll go?
Sure. Um, yeah, I thought it says, like, what combination would work with each other? But I'm open to others, too. So my choices are Don, Matt, Rich, Shirley.
Or Matt.
Really? Okay. Oh, gosh. Um.
All the men are back.
We might need Chris to come break at that. Mine are, um, Rich, Matt, Dan, and Don. Okay, so the person who clearly has sixes is Dan.
Hey, Dan.
Yeah.
And then with five, we have Peter. And then for four, we have Rich and Rami, who are both tied. Yep. Shirley was three, Don was three, Matt was two, um, David Kennedy was one.
Okay, so our committee is, can you say?
No.
We still have to then make motions, so that's, that is our smaller pool. If one of these gets voted down by all seven of us.
Can you run down those again, just down in order? How many votes each one got? Don got three?
So, so Dan Moan was six. Congratulations, sir. Um, almost, congratulations, almost. Um, Peter was five. Uh, Rich and Rami were both tied with four.
Yep.
And they were the only ones that had four. Um, Shirley and Don were tied with three each. Matt was two. David was one. And then no votes for Roxanne.
Okay, got it.
And this does not mean these are the members of the committee, this is, yeah, simply how we.
Look at.
Just make some motions.
Okay. So I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Dan Moan to the Police Transition Committee.
I second.
Motion was made by councilperson Stumpf, seconded by councilperson Share. Discussion.
Who's Dan Moan?
Um, I would say this, out of the, so there were four people who knew the budget, Dan was one of them, within a hundred thousand dollars. Um, Dan is also on my list of people who are highly tenured, who have lived here for longer than twenty-five years.
Yep, great interview. I don't think we really need to discuss, well, we can, but like, yeah.
We vote?
All right.
Why is it, it sounds like you're his campaign manager. The hell are you doing there?
All right. Any other comments from council? Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those abstentions, motion carries unanimously.
All right. Um, I'll make a motion, um, to appoint Rich Wayne to the Police Transition Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Finer, seconded, or, sorry, motion was made by councilperson Stumpf, seconded by councilperson Finer. Discussion.
Um, I would say this, he was within a thousand dollars of knowing the police budget. I feel like he did his homework. He's, again, long tenure, very active in the community. Three terms on council, I know from some perspectives that may be a concern, but to, to me, I would want to appoint people that I really feel like they have a, a care and concern for the borough, and they've demonstrated that for several years versus somebody who's just lived here for a few years. I'm not even sure I would appoint myself to the Police Transition Committee.
I always thought he's so resourceful. Um, when, when we worked together on council, I mean, he just, he dealt with the whole Yardley Walk development and the winds. He, he just goes really deep, and he looks at all parts, and it's like, I don't know, if he's on this committee, would you feel confident that nothing's getting by him?
Twenty.
That's a good person to have on here.
Any other comments from council?
I have a little different view, and my, my view is, is we have the five core people that are on this committee a- already that have either council members or direct ties to them. I'm trying to lean more towards bringing in people with more of a clean slate approach to it, but have, uh, um, relevant business history, et cetera. Just knowing the budget number, because you're a former councilperson, you know where to look, doesn't really carry any weight with me, in my opinion. Uh, so, uh, I think we're better going with outsiders.
I, I like that, too.
I agree. I just feel like that, I thought part of the objective of this was to involve, uh, people from the community at large, not from our closer knit council community. So I think it's just good to involve people with maybe less of a focus on council and council goings-on.
Yeah, for the record, the question about the budget was not to see if people, it was to see if people had an opinion about the budget and how much we're spending on police services, whether they thought it's too high or too low. I think that's an important, um, viewpoint, and I think the people who knew the number had an opinion about it, which I think is valuable. Um, I don't think, for me personally, nobody on this list is in my close inner circle. I don't talk to any of these people regularly, so, um, I, I think we, Chief O'Neill was a very different chief than Chief Kelly was. And so having people who, if, that would be one way that we could save money, I, based on the subject matter experts tonight who talked about Chief O'Neill, like, paring down. So I think what, what better place to get it from than people who lived under a previous administration? So I look at it that way versus their council people, yeah, but I, I could, I can't even tell you how different council was even three years ago. So twelve years ago, it was not, it's apples and oranges that we're comparing. I think it is an outsider perspective at this point.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think it's a very important distinction, somebody who years ago served versus somebody who's currently under the public eye, you know, ru- running or has run, you know, uh, very, very different. It was a very different council that I served on my first term with Rich, and then he didn't run again, and I didn't run either. Um, that was, that was another Yardley.
All right, any other comments from council?
No.
Any other comments from the public? None, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries five-three, I believe.
Four-three, wasn't it? Did we get seven votes?
I think it was four-three.
You went to division of the house, I don't know.
Uh, four-three, motion carries.
Um, I will make a motion to appoint, um, Rami Mahmood to the Police Transition Committee.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by councilperson Stumpf and seconded by councilperson Carlson. Discussion.
I think he's a very strong candidate, and you think about it, he doesn't know a lot about the inner workings, but, um, I think he, his answers were spot-on on a lot of how to approach it, yet also balancing that, uh, public safety number-one aspect of it. And him, you know, reaching out and, hey, I hope there are people who know a lot more about policing than I do on there, too, was insightful and, uh, a good answer. And I think he, in my mind, he represents the nice blend of, of dealing with building organizations and changing organizations in the outside world while also really, uh, valuing the borough, um, having moved here from, from close by, so, that's my take.
I would say, too, um, I have a value for the business experience. Um, I would say he's been here a medium amount of time, seven years, same amount of time as I have, and I'm very involved in the town, so I think that's a good amount of time. I think I'd be more skeptical of somebody who's only been here a year or two. Um, he wasn't initially one of my top four, but he was written down on my list as, if I had more options, he would have been in there. So even though I didn't vote for him in the first round, I would be comfortable voting for him in the second round.
Any other comments?
Did he say that he would be, he was involved for something with the merging of Princeton Borough and?
No, he wasn't involved.
No, he, he lived there when that happened.
He lived there, okay.
He lived in one of the two, I don't know which.
When quite here, uh, just concerned about if he supported that or not, but, okay.
Any other comments from council? From the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Just, sorry, just one thing. To your, to the point that David just made.
Yep.
Was he advocating? He wasn't advocating, he just.
I don't.
Yeah, I just didn't understand what he was.
I think he just mentioned it.
In terms of, we should look out and see what's worked in other places. And he just happened to know that that was one that they went through. It might have been a bad experience, it might have been a good, he didn't, he didn't say, I don't think he do.
Yeah.
Whether or not it worked. It's just, that's how I read it, I don't know.
So I'll say this, too. The first time I heard it when I interviewed him, I kind of went, oh, that's interesting. Kind of was maybe a yellow flag for me, but like, hearing it back now, I think it was a purely objective statement. As I lived through this, maybe there's something we can glean from that. I don't think it was a statement one way or the other, so.
Just was clarifying, 'cause I couldn't hear.
No, I think that's a good, good thing to bring up.
Any other comments? Again, this is.
I'm tired.
Yeah, uh, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Abstentions, motion carries six-one-zero.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Peter Merjenko. Help me out.
Merjenko?
Yes.
I second.
Motion was made by councilperson Carlson, seconded by councilperson Share. Discussion.
I think this is a key, key place of, while, while he's only been here a short period of time, I think it's good to have someone who has deep institutional knowledge of the workings of, of, uh, police organizations, but maybe not ours. We're, we're gonna have a, of someone, you know, from our, one of our offices involved, which is good, and we'll get the local version of that. But this guy may bring to the table things like, well, you know, one of the things we have to, in this boroughs, you gotta deal with detectives, and you gotta deal with outside, you gotta deal with how we do the court stuff in Doylestown, et cetera. And he may have some insights to how you, how you deal with all those kinds of things. And I think it would be nice to have a, an expert who's not, uh, totally tied to, to this borough, uh, and will be able to speak freely about how you go through that. And the fact he went through all kinds of reorganizations, et cetera, how to deal with less is, uh, another good thing that he brings to the table.
Agreed. Other comments?
Um, I would just say one thing that, that I thought was his closing statement of, I want my taxes to be as low as possible, and just being, having only lived here three years, I guess my concern would be that just, what can we do to save money, but not potentially looking at the larger picture. And so while I liked him very much as a person, I thought he had a great work experience, um, that concerned me a little bit. And then, you know, also Trenton being so different than Yardley, you know, so much more bureaucratic. Um, also Steven being in New Jersey, like, there's different laws there. Um, their unions are different. Um, and that, um, my personal opinion is that our, I mean, I'm not just looking to raise our taxes just to raise them, but I think we pay very low taxes, and I'm, I'm not willing to cut the police to just save a few bucks. And, um, so this one's gonna be very much a no for me.
Agreed, uh, to some point, only that he's just a part of the committee, and, and as it's been pointed out here this evening, like, as even Dan pointed out, we're the ones with the voting power, so.
Yeah.
I mean, he's just here to advise us.
Sure.
He's a voice.
I don't think his closing remarks said, as a taxpayer, wanna save money. He said we have, we have two things. You gotta decide whether you want a community police for, uh, local police force, or you wanna save money. That's how he laid it out there.
Yeah, I mean, he said, I wanna, I want my taxes to be as low as possible, was the statement.
We all want that, right? But we all want the police, too.
So.
You can want a lot of things, but you can't always get what you want, so, you know.
My concern is somebody, although he said it exists in Yardley before the last three and a half years, really, um, it's such a different world here, and understanding the interaction, the, the, what our police force means to our local residents, I don't think he'd bring that to the table. But I understand he's one of nine, so it's kind of like, I'm on the fence with this one, because I, I like that he has all these knowledge points that he could bring in.
I got the feeling.
I didn't like that statement about taxes either, 'cause it's, it's a more complex equation than just that. I mean, he probably knows that, but, you know.
But at least.
You hear one side without the other side. Some people said.
True.
You have to look at the cost and balance that with the service. All I heard was cost. So, but I don't know, it wasn't in the long range of you, so.
But I think it's important that we have somebody who can challenge this, as people are talking about, well, we have to do it this way 'cause of police, 'cause of this reporting requirement or this, you know, things that are, oh, that's a known police thing you gotta do. It'd be nice to have somebody, like, if I'm Rami, look to, is that really true? Is, are there different ways to skin the cat? And he might throw out some different ways to skin the cat, that's.
Yeah, he's, he's one, one voice, one voice out of everybody, so.
I, I.
And he's not voting.
I guess.
Community having a large group.
Yeah, exactly.
I guess my take would just be, you know, to Don's point, to, I wouldn't say to fully counter it, but just to critique it slightly would be that I think we, we have that to an extent with Kim, Chris, Paula, Caroline, and Ori, and our officer that we appoint, you have the police knowledge there, so.
You have the borough police now.
That's true, that's true. Like I said, that's why I say it's not a full, I'm not taking an opposing view issue, it's just, it's interesting to me. So I, we vote to appoint him as the fourth member, it's not gonna be in the world, I'm not gonna lose sleep over it. Um, I'd be, I'm gonna vote the way I vote, but I think I'd be comfortable with the end result. I'm just one of seven.
All right, any other comments from anyone in the room? Sure.
It's secret.
Uh, me, um, Kim, Ori, Paula, and, um.
Chris.
Chris Harding.
I haven't heard it, the name says. I guess the four of those five.
Sorry, I would be, uh, thank you. I would be remiss, I suppose, and it's not about Peter himself or Rami or anyone else, but we had two people of color here tonight, and we didn't choose any of them. I think that Yardley being the town that it is, that it would be a shame that we did not take that into consideration. I'm just gonna lay it on the table.
Thank you. I did definitely take it into consideration in, in my tabulations. Um, any other comments from anyone?
Thank you.
Jenny, we also only have males so far.
That is.
Yeah.
That we appointed tonight.
Um.
Oh, sorry.
We have women on the committee, all right.
Um.
Yeah.
The committee actually already has a majority of women.
All right, any other comments from anyone?
We're getting into the weeds.
Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Abstentions, motion carries five-two. All right, uh, I'm not going to accept any submissions for discussion items, so we're going to adjourn into executive session. There will be no vote. The topic of the executive session will be to discuss litigation. Welcome.
The, uh, meet, the, the, the commission begins in five minutes, I hope you're ready.
The only one unanimous. All right, then I'm gonna go to the bottom.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made in second, and all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.